Good evening and welcome. Sorry for that brief delay. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Boston City TV, on YouTube, Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If you would like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, in the hallway. Sign up for both public comment periods. We'll close tonight at 6:30 PM. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues on the committee and interim superintendent Perel to join me on the floor for a special presentation.
Well, for more than four decades, the city of Boston and the Boston Public Schools have benefited from the wisdom and guidance of Sam Tyler, who we're here to celebrate tonight. Mr. Tyler retired last month as a president of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, where he worked for forty-six years, including thirty-six years as the bureau's president. His expert analysis and advocacy have shaped key policies and ultimately made Boston a stronger city for all who live and work here. His commitment to good government was evident, especially in the bureau's annual presentation of the Shattuck Awards, which honored the young son heroes of the municipal government all across our city. Our teachers, our lunch monitors, our custodians, just to name a few, have all benefited from this prize. Mr. Tyler, we want to thank you for your service and leadership by presenting you with this citation, which reads—come on up, Sam. Let's give him a round of applause.
Before I read the citation, you know, I told Sam a little earlier—I'm sorry that I had to make him get into a suit today. You know, he did retire a couple months—like a month ago, you know? We also joked, Ms. Sullivan and I, that we thought he might show up looking like David Letterman after his retirement with a huge beard, but glad to see you've kept it cool. So I want to read this citation. "The Boston School Committee extends its deepest appreciation to Sam Tyler, the president of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, from 1983 to 2019, in recognition of forty-six years of providing city and district leaders with insightful research and valuable guidance to make Boston a stronger, more vibrant city for students and families. Be it further known that the chairperson and the members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the interim superintendent of schools in thanking Mr. Tyler for his unwavering commitment to public service and wish him continued success in all future endeavors." Mr. Tyler, thank you again.
Thank you. I have to, I think, correct one thing. Not every time I came here or at Twenty-Six Court Street, what I said was not always interpreted as wisdom for those who were in the room. But, you know, just reflecting back over all that time, there's been an enormous number of issues that we've been involved in, and some interesting situations. I mean, just one, for example, when the bus drivers were negotiating a contract, I was at a meeting, and they came in carrying a casket and then decided to surround me and chant, so. But, you know, I have gone through a number of years in terms of the— governance has been an issue that we have dealt with, obviously budgets and finance issues. But governance and contract issues really took a lot of our time. So, working through the five-member committee, the elected committee, the thirteen dysfunctional elected committee, and then having a big part in creating the appointed board. So I think—I appreciate the fact that you're doing this, and it's the appointed board that is here and needs to stay here, and do the job that you have been appointed to do, because that is critical for, I think, the city and education in Boston. So, I appreciate your work. And I have to say also, because you mentioned the Shattuck Awards, and the applications for Shattuck Awards are all due in one week, so next Wednesday. And so we expect the school department to continue to provide quality candidates for consideration. And, you know, we've run the gamut of all different kind of positions. And so, we're looking—for, well, the research bureau is looking for more and even better candidates. So, you have one week to go.
Well, thank you very much, Sam. And I know a number of your colleagues are here this evening to celebrate this recognition as well. I want to note for folks as well, I got to know Mr. Sam when I was a new lawyer at the city in 2002. And that was right at the height of some contract talks with both police and fire. And so, I believe you might have been booed in a few of those forums that I attended as well. And I said, "I gotta know that guy," you know? And we've had some good interactions ever since. And so, we greatly value the expertise and the insight that you've given, not only to the city but to the process and to the constituents at large over the years. And we can't thank you enough for that.
Thank you.
I want to ask the interim superintendent for—two—you can take that if she'd like to say a few words as well.
Thank you. This will be very brief, but what I will say, Sam, is that my knowledge and experience with you far predates my time in this role. And as an education advocate, a school improvement advocate, I've long benefited from your leadership, the work of the Municipal Research Bureau, your fierce dedication to nonpartisan, issue-focused explanations of the work that happens in this city. You have been a guide and advisor and informer of many of us in the field of education, those interested in civic life and engagement. I'm grateful. And I am wondering about the afterlife as a retired person, because last night I was speaking at an education event, very, you know, serious and formal, and there were about thirty people in the room. And I look up, and there's Sam Tyler in his retirement, choosing to come out and participate in a discussion around education issues. So, we hope that you are not gone. You're just in a different phase, but still engaged. And thank you for what you've done on behalf of civic and municipal life in the city of Boston.
Thank you. I hope not to be gone.
Why don't we take a picture over here with the entire committee?
Yeah, let me go down those rows.
Thank you.
we look forward to working with for many more years in partnership with the Municipal Research Bureau. Okay, we will move on now to the approval of the minutes. The—there was a copy of the minutes in the members' packet from March 27. If the minutes are approved, they will be available in the hallway. And if they—if there are any amendments made to the minutes from the March 27, 2019 meeting of the school committee, they will be—they will be posted on the website tomorrow. I left my notes down there, so I'm reading this from memory. If there are any comments or questions from the committee before we move on on the minutes, are there any amendments? Hearing none. I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27, 2019 school committee as presented. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. That sounds like a second for Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the interim superintendent's report. I present to you our interim superintendent, Ms. Laura Perel.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. We have had a lot of exciting events in BPS over the past couple of weeks, but also several really important topics that I want to touch on tonight. But I will start with the highlights. And the first is relative to the city of Boston's new Quality Pre-K Fund announcement, which happened last week. On April 2, many of the folks here and many in the room joined me and Mayor Walsh to announce that Boston is launching the $15 million Quality Pre-K Fund. This is another huge step forward toward providing quality preschool seats for all of Boston's four-year-old students, using a mixed-delivery model that includes a streamlined curriculum, professional development, and research-aligned standards, both in BPS K-1 classrooms and in community-based settings with our partners who run preschool programs, Head Start programs, and a range of early childhood programs in community-based organizations. Chair LaCanto and committee member Jerry Robinson were with me as we made—participated in this very exciting announcement at ABCD Walnut Grove in Dorchester. And as many of you know, Ms. Robinson has been a fierce advocate for early childhood education for her entire career, and it was really an honor and a privilege to share the exciting announcement with you, Jerry. The Quality Pre-K Fund will allow Boston to close the quality seat gap for the city's four-year-olds, which currently stands at about 750 seats to go over the next five years. This continues the strides we've made in the last six years when the first 750 seats were added, both by BPS and in community-based organizations. So I want to thank all of our early childhood partners, especially the staff in our early childhood department here at BPS. And I particularly like to thank and acknowledge Executive Director Jason Sacks and Universal Pre-K Director Tiara Diaz for all of their hard work and dedication to this announcement and to the work behind it. Last week, I spent an evening making a very fun round of calls to eleven of our educators to notify them that they had been selected to receive one of the 2019 Educator of the Year awards jointly sponsored by the Boston Public Schools, the city of Boston, and the Boston Teachers Union. Close to 400 nominations were submitted this year, and the winners exemplify a commitment to the teaching profession and provide positive contributions to the lives of the students they serve. In the first of many celebrations of these eleven leading educators, they were recognized Sunday night at Center Court during the last regular-season home game of the Boston Celtics. You can read more about these educators on our website, bostonpublicschools.org. They include Jillian Archer, psychologist at the Giles School in East Boston, Javier Castillo and Ben Perod, educators at the Hernandez School in Roxbury, and I believe our first teaching pair that has won Educator of the Year together. So it was really fun to call one and then say, "Now, wait. Don't call the other yet. Let me call the second one." And then they connected in the middle. Georgiana Chavez, an educator at the Trotter School in Dorchester, who is also retiring this year. Alice Daly, a special education teacher at the Lee K-8 in Dorchester. Eric Gao, a teacher at the Higginson School in Roxbury. Lisa Johnson-Bechtel, a clinical coordinator at the Mary Lyon High School in Brighton. Mark Sacco, a special education teacher at the Quincy Elementary in Chinatown. Samuel Texera, teacher at the Henderson Upper School in Dorchester. Allison Villa, a teacher at Boston Latin Academy in Dorchester. And Tanya Boone, educator at the Adams School in East Boston. Incidentally, Ms. Boone also will be retiring this year after over thirty years of dedicated service to the Adams and the Boston Public Schools. The only tricky part was explaining why the superintendent was calling the teachers at home at night. And so, I hope I didn't alarm anyone, but it quickly gave way to real delight in the recognition. Most of these nominations came from their fellow educators, their school leaders, their students, and their families. And so, it was really a powerful way to celebrate and recognize the work. We will have another ceremony recognizing all of the Educators of the Year here in school committee chambers on May 22, before the meeting that evening. And on behalf of the Boston Public Schools and the school committee, we want to congratulate and thank these educators for the work they do every day. Yesterday morning, the district held its fourth annual autism luncheon in this very room. The event is held each year to celebrate the ways in which people with autism impact our lives. It's also an opportunity for students and educators to showcase their work in programming. I was honored to receive a framed picture of the gorgeous Acceptance Mosaic made by our students from across our programs. The mosaic comprises the students' artistic responses to the prompt, "What's your superpower?" The very large piece—it's about ten by eight feet—will hang on the fifth floor in the Special Education Department as a constant reminder of the work they do. And thank you to the community partners. Well, before I say that, I also left the event with some beautiful Jethro dolls. This is a Jethro doll. And these amazing hand-sewn dolls, that are all unique and different, are made by a Charlestown High student named Jethro. Each doll comes with its own backstory and unique personality, and Jethro's superpower is that he makes these marvelously creative dolls. So I want to thank the community partners who attended, and of course, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Cindy Nielsen and her entire team for the work they do every day to support some of our most vulnerable and talented learners. I'm going to just shift gears here for a moment. So, later in this meeting, we will have an important Build BPS update related to a major issue we will be facing over the next few years at the Jackson Man facility in Alston, which houses the Jackson Man K-8 School, the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and the Jackson Man BCYF Community Center. Chief Operating Officer John Hanlon and Chief Engagement Officer Monica Roberts will provide greater detail during a presentation later this evening, both about the building concerns, but also about the robust communication and planning process we will engage in with these two school communities and their neighboring schools in Alston-Brighton to identify alternate locations for the schools and programs by 2021. But first, I want to address this matter, both to dispel some of the misinformation, but also some of the anxiety that any announcement of building situations can produce, and hopefully to keep us focused on the proactive communication and thoughtful planning process ahead. To be clear, the issue of concern is the status and longevity of the facility, not the schools and programs themselves. We are not proposing the closure of either the Jackson Man or the Horace Mann schools, nor is the city planning on closing the Jackson Man BCYF Community Center. We simply may have to find another location for them after 2021. We are saying, however, that there's a clear need to relocate the programs in light of the significant structural issues that must be addressed while we consider long-term renovation or rebuild options. To provide additional context, as part of the Build BPS process, we are actively and proactively identifying issues in our school facilities, a number of which have suffered from long-deferred maintenance, which we are attempting to correct through Build BPS, but also proactively addressing them in order to avoid any near-term facility emergencies that can lead to sudden, unexpected disruptions, such as we all experienced last fall with the West Roxbury Educational Complex. To that end, and as part of this effort, the Jackson Man underwent a full-scale external assessment commissioned by the city of Boston's Public Facilities Department late last fall. I called for this assessment and requested that it be conducted, because we knew that I had asked for any building that had any longstanding, significant facility repair/maintenance concerns. As soon as the Jackson Man was identified, I called for a full engineering review. We asked for this assessment, so because we were aware that there had been some serious problems of late and concerns coming from the school with regard to roofs and windows. This assessment, in the form of a third-party engineering review of all building systems, was released today. The hundred-and-twenty-something-page report is available on our website at bostonpublicschools.org. The report identifies several critical building systems which are past their useful life and must be replaced, but also specifies a series of short-term repairs which can be made to these and other components of the facility in order to extend the building's useful life, which we will do. And the focus of these repairs include the roofing, windows, and the air handler units, among others, which involves the ventilation in the building. I do want to stress that the Jackson Man is safe and secure right now. The report does not reveal any dangers to students or staff in the building now. The engineering report—which everyone is welcome to take a look at—indicates that many of these key functions can or will fail in future if not immediately addressed. So, we will be doing those emergency repairs this summer. But based on this report, again, which is posted online, we've also concluded that we may not be able to operate this facility beyond approximately two years from now. It might be three years, but two is what we're thinking of at present, just to be conservative. The level of work required is extensive, necessitating the full replacement of many core building systems. And anyone who has been inside the Jackson Man is going to resonate with the fact that the building is suffering around roofs, windows, leaks, and other concerns. As a result, we believe the safest option is to do the immediate repairs, to extend the life of the building for at least two more years, and then plan to relocate the Jackson Man and Horace Mann schools and the BCYF center in 2021, at the conclusion of that school year, just over two years from now, following careful planning and a robust community engagement process, both about near-term options for swing space, colocation, as well as longer-term options. Thankfully, we have more than two years to engage in a community process about how to plan for the building coming offline, and the effect that that will have on the schools and community center currently housed in the facility, and its impact on the surrounding schools in Alston-Brighton. This includes placing the schools and programs, again, in alternate locations on a temporary or long-term basis, depending on how plans develop for the reuse of that facility. Tomorrow, we are holding a meeting for staff at both schools, and we have community meetings scheduled with the two school communities in the next two weeks. We sent a letter to both school communities in multiple languages yesterday to begin sharing this news and the planning process ahead. We are also working with all of the school leaders in the Alston-Brighton area to include their school communities in the coming planning discussions as well. This news—let's see. Yep, I will stop there and save it for the introduction of the report. So, I wanted to share that now upfront, because the letter is out and information is beginning to circulate. And this is—we hope, while dealing with a very significant building situation, fortunately identified more proactively, we have a longer timeline. We can share the information transparently and make it a more transparent and engaged community planning process while we consider options for relocation, colocation, and placement for the three different programs in that facility. So, that is the important update on the Horace Mann. We will have a full presentation later this evening with John Hanlon and Monica Roberts able to answer questions, but I wanted to share it at the front as well. And then my final update, also related to indirectly to Build BPS updates. As you know, as part of the plan to close West Roxbury Academy and Urban Science Academy, we committed to prioritizing stability and continuity for all of the students in those schools. That continues to be our chief priority. At the moment, however, the negotiations with the BTU around impact bargaining have reached a stalemate. Nonetheless, the district's commitment to continuity and stability has not changed. The majority of students are enrolled for the 2019-2020 school year, and we are turning our attention to supporting staff as they identify new roles throughout BPS. our attention to supporting staff as they identify new roles throughout BPS. That will continue in the coming weeks, and we are hopeful that we will see even more WRA and USA teachers being retained at some of the schools that are receiving higher concentrations of WRA and USA students. To be clear, with or without an agreement with the BTU or any bargaining unit, in securing the closure, we stated that the best interest of West Roxbury Academy and Urban Science Academy students would be the focus of all deliberations. This was true in my recommendation to the Boston School Committee. It was true throughout all of the program planning and student assignment processes that have occurred since December, and it's been true during all the interactions with our bargaining partners. But I did want to provide that update for you as well. And that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sauer. We'll open it up now to the committee for questions or discussion. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Superintendent, could you dig in a little bit more about West Roxbury Education Complex, in particular the students in the autistic strand? And my understanding is, they have been told, and we have a letter in front of us from one of the parents, I know a number of them here tonight as well, that we have been told that the teachers are not moving as a group to the Burke.
So I'm going to ask Deputy Superintendent, oh, sorry. I'm going to ask Deputy Superintendent for Administration Dave Murphy, who's been directly involved in the discussions, to answer your questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Pearl. Mr. O'Neill, I'm not familiar with that, with the particular letter, so I'd have to obviously respond to specifics. As the superintendent stated there, the negotiations over the impact of the closure of the two schools have reached a stalemate between the district and the union, and so our hope of having an agreement in place in which teachers would travel from the schools that were closing to a receiving school, it is true that that is currently not the case. What I can't speak to is individual decisions that either teachers are making or headmasters are making with regard to where people might actually be employed. So I think it would be premature to say that no one will be going to any particular school. I know that there are, frankly, school leaders who are attempting to make sure that that is not the case, but it is true that there's no agreement in place with the union at this time to have the teachers travel with the programs.
So I think it was a specific request of this committee as part of voting to close West Roxbury, that the district pay particular attention to the most vulnerable youth, and I think we would all be in agreement that the most vulnerable youth were the autistic strand. That was a key concern. And so I individually asked that the district commit to continuing to pay special attention to that strand and have a heightened level of communications with the parents involved. They're right in the middle of making difficult decisions, and I believe they felt that they were going to be moving as a group, and many of them, I think, delayed making decisions about other schools with the belief that the teachers were going to be moving as a group, and now are stuck in a pretty vulnerable position. And these are some of our parents who have students with heightened needs. That was a specialty in that building, and obviously they have concerns. So Superintendent, if we could continue to try to go above and beyond in working with that population, I would appreciate it.
They absolutely remain our priority.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Ms. Oliver Davila.
I just wanted to ask if there was anything else in that update about West Roxbury or Urban Science, because I wasn't sure that I really understood what your update was besides this piece. I just want to make sure that I understand what you were saying, so I apologize, but I need a little more clarity.
So it was solely focused on this question of bargaining talks, impact bargaining talks relative to the movement of staff. The collective bargaining agreement continues to govern the hiring of teachers in the absence of an impact bargaining agreement, which would create special conditions. So both parties would have to come to agreement for special conditions in the hiring, and so that is, has not been successful. But the standard hiring approaches and regulations and rules and opportunities for teachers apply. Hiring is not yet complete, which is why we cannot speak to which teachers are choosing and/or being selected, and in addition to which, some teachers are making choices of their own about other positions that may be advantageous. So that process is ongoing, and so we can continue to report back. But tonight's update was specifically on this hiring element because questions have come up. We will continue to have periodic updates on the transitions for all students, the program designed at the Irving, which is underway for the rising seniors, and then, as information is available, placement of staff as well.
Okay, great. And that's the only update? And you also said the students, that not all of them had enrolled yet? Is that what you said? Had chosen their...
The majority are enrolled and settled.
Do you know what that is by any chance?
Monica?
If I can interject, I believe we had an update on that, if not the last meeting, the meeting prior, and the number was somewhere in the 80s, high 80s to low 90s.
Okay, thank you. I can't, I can't, I don't have the same memory I used to have, so thank you.
And we can do a full report on those other programmatic elements, given the length of some of the other updates tonight, but we would be happy to come in with a fuller update on other elements of programming and student placement, which we had given a full update on a couple of meetings ago.
Okay, apologies for that. I will look back on my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Robinson.
Just have a quick question. Given this new news, how are parents being kept in the loop, particularly the parents of the kids in the strand, so that they understand what's going on as they're making choices?
So we're just at the front end of these communications, and Monica Roberts will speak to it more fully in our presentation. Again, we will be having a full presentation and slide deck on this, but we always begin with letters, followed immediately by meetings. We have also been in early conversation with the school leaders, both in those two schools and all of the surrounding Alston-Brighton schools, to give them an early heads-up, so that we are working collaboratively with the school leaders around the communication needs of families. And we will be meeting with the staff of both schools tomorrow afternoon and asking them very similar questions. What is the best way to support your families and communicate repeatedly? And make sure that the message that is heard is that nothing will change at the Jackson Man or the Horace Mann for the coming two years. We have time to plan accordingly around both schools, which are currently co-located, as well as BCYF, the Jackson Man Community Center, which also will be obliged to find a new location. So we're working collaboratively with the city and with many of the city agencies, but we felt it was important to bring the information forward now so that everyone could be aware of the need to plan and make decisions, as opposed to waiting and trying to come up with a plan and then presenting it. So at this point, our plan and focus is on the near-term repairs and the communication, and then structuring a thoughtful planning and communication process over the coming two years, while we are obviously looking at space options and configuration options that will meet the needs of both schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, sorry to come back again, but on that topic, Superintendent, first of all, thank you for the proactive approach with this building, and thank you for reaching out. I see a common trend between that and West Roxbury, which is the 70s-era building. So the first question is, how are we doing at the Harvard Kent and the old Agassi Building, where Margarita Munez and Mission K-12 are now, and the Blackstone and the Quincy, and all those others that were built in that same timeframe?
Yep. So yes, we're all keeping our eye on buildings in the 70s. And John can speak to this in greater detail. So last fall, before I called for the full engineering review, I first asked for a thorough assessment from Inspeccional Services and our own facility, based on maintenance issues and repeated requests. It's easy to see in the data schools where there are concerns. I asked them to confirm for me, were there any other buildings in vulnerable condition out there? They went and identified, looked at four different buildings, of course, West Roxbury, which had, at that point, already been identified, but confirmed. We asked them to look at the Jackson Man. They also looked at the Blackstone and the Quincy Lower. And the response was that West Roxbury was by far the most concerning building. Jackson Man was second in line, and concerns with both Josiah Quincy and the Blackstone were comparative to those other two at a different place. I will say that, and John can share this detail later during the presentation, the Josiah Quincy has a number of planned repairs, major repairs underway. We have recently submitted a proposal for a $5 million project at the Blackstone, which will include the full engineering review, which I just had conducted on the Jackson Man. So the Blackstone will get that full engineering review on the way toward a design project to, for those of you who are familiar with the Blackstone, it's an open-plan school, as well as being built in the 70s, which means it has very few walls. So the intent of that engineering review is proactive, to build them the walls and doors that will make that space more secure, but at the same time, that full engineering review will identify any other significant issues. So this is exactly the pattern that we're attempting to build. We know we have buildings with deferred maintenance. We know we have old buildings, and so to use our data to identify the trouble spots, call for full engineering reviews when need be, post them publicly, and secure ideally enough time, based on short-term repairs, that we can then plan thoughtfully and proactively. So that's the approach we're trying to take.
Did they also look at the other, at least, I can think of two other buildings from the same timeframe, same design, being the Harvard Kent and the former Agassi Building?
So we didn't use just the time. We used maintenance data on where we knew there were substantial complaints coming in, known repair issues, and/or we crossed off the list buildings that had already gotten a new boiler or a new roof.
Okay. Those happened to both have the same big, open-space issues that you're wrestling with the other. And a separate matter, and I thank you for being so proactively in saying, this is not about school closures. There were two great schools there. We're going to figure out a solution for them. I do want to note that the Horace Mann School for the Deaf, in particular, is another one of our gems that is underappreciated in this city, and it may be interesting, in that case, to actually think about, is there a more central location for that program? Similar to the Carter School being in the south end and being able to be convenient for parents across the entire district. Right now, being in Brighton, it can be difficult for students who do have hearing loss to avail themselves of the specialties in that school. And it is also a school that people coming from outside the district can pay to be in, so it may be interesting to actually think about using this as an opportunity to look for a central location for them, that A) makes it easier for parents, B) may attract more parents from outside, and allows them to expand. They have a teaching base there that is really good at what they do, and I think, quite frankly, and I will bring it up on the special ed presentation tonight, I'm not sure if we're availing enough of our students who have hearing issues of the ability to be educated there. So...
So to that point, and thank you, Member O'Neill, that's spot-on. So the Horace Mann School is one of our special schools. It is a citywide resource, and so it can exist anywhere in the city, and in some cases, it might not be currently in the most convenient location for all the reasons you laid out. That's exactly the, so the solutions for these three schools and programs, both the City Community Center, the Horace Mann, and the Jackson Man, need not all be together, particularly when we're looking at temporary locations, co-location, swing space. We will also look very carefully at program placement. The Jackson Man is a very complicated school with lots of high-needs programs that they have received and inherited over the years. So yes, there is the possibility of finding, and in some cases, it may be easier to find space for programs separately, including the Center for Youth and Family. And regardless if there's a complete tear-down and rebuild of the complex, all three would need to find different locations, either permanent or long-term. That is why we wanted to make it public quickly, even though we know people might want answers right away. We think it's really important to get the information out with a lot of warning, and then be able to be transparent around the quest for solutions, the search for space, and a lot of the ideas that can come from those conversations. With many partners, there'll be a number of agencies involved as well. We've got BCYF, we have BPS, and I won't go into the alphabet soup of the agencies who will be helping us, but again, we, until we have solved all of the longstanding, outstanding building problems, we are hoping this time around, with a little more warning and by asking for it proactively, to model a pattern for the BPS to solve these problems when they arise.
I don't want to spring anything on that school community. I just want to simply express that if there's an option to also consider moving that program more centrally and finding them a location that allows them to expand the great work they're doing, I think it's something that should be on the table and discussed with that community, both the teachers there and the parents involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there any further questions or discussion? Ms. Oliver Davila.
I didn't want to say anything, but I have to say something because I think, and even though Mr. O'Neill said it, I do think it's important to really say that this is great to have this much notice and to be looking at the buildings and to be proactive. That can't be understated, and I think what you framed, having the community and family engagement piece, and doing it ahead of time and having those discussions, I just want to say I really, really appreciate that. I appreciate the forethought, and I didn't want to let that moment go by, even though you said the same thing. I think it's really important to note that, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Oliver Davila, and I think we all share that similar sentiment, given the speed with which we've been notified with some of the recent facilities issues within the district. It's a sentiment we all share and we appreciate, and I think our community does as well. Before we move on, I do want to just loop back to where the superintendent started and the Educator of the Year awards. One other item that I did, I don't think we should move on without recognizing is that each of those Educators of the Year that were recognized and will be, continue to be recognized by the district in the coming months, virtually every one of them teaches in or teaches to our highest-needs populations, either students with special needs, students with different language abilities, students from different socioeconomic strata. And so I think they're really, as we were looking, hearing the list tonight, and as I was looking through it last week, I was really struck by the fact that, you know, we're honoring some of the teachers that do the most important work that's closest to the mission of this district, and so they're really, I'm really excited to read more and hear more about these educators and see the work that they do as leading educators within our district and applaud their work. So if there's no further questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion now to receive the interim superintendent's report as presented. That's a motion from Ms. Robinson. Sounds like a second from Dean Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the interim superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the report is approved. We'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LoCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 21 speakers this evening, so each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not re-sign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. Our first speaker this evening is David Nave, and he'll be followed by Janelle Bruno and Lisa Kincaid.
Good evening, Mr. Nave.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm here this evening with respect to my son Dylan, as always, to give you a little update of what I've done advocating for him since our last meeting. I had gone to the mayor's office for some advice, but it's not a draw... I had gone to the mayor's office for some advice, but it's not a drop in, you know, we're available conversation place. So I was pretty determined that day, and I went to the State House and went to the Board of Education, started there, and then went on into other rooms with other parties. In retrospect, I'm trying to ask this panel, this is such an overwhelming manner and concerning, where if this could happen to one, and only because I have some idea of what I see and what isn't right or wrong, I'm able to catch it. To how many other children are future children? Because we know when we put a child in an alternative or anything, we take away their social skills now. And when we leave a child sitting at home for nine months without nothing, nothing, and only when dad acts on something is there some action taken. Well, that public school type of thing with immunity, all those rules and laws and policies, I've been going at it for months with stuff, but those kind of go out the window when documents are not corrected or fixed. I just asked this panel to help, I think, a wide range of people who are very concerned for Dylan and the issues on hand, if you could help. I would appreciate that very much. And that's about where I stand at this point. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nave. Our next speaker is Janelle Bruno, and she'll be followed by Lisa Kincaid, Mike Kincaid, and Willie Kincaid.
Hi, my name is Janelle Bruno. I'm the parent of hopefully a future Boston Public Schools student. I live in Charlestown, and I actually moved back to Charlestown after living in the suburbs for a couple of years because we loved the community and we loved the location and being part of the city. Prior to, I actually opened my own business in Charlestown as well. And prior to opening my own business, I worked in education for, public education for 10-plus years, so I understand the difficult job that you guys have. This year, we put my son in the lottery for K-1, and he was waitlisted, along with many other families in our area. I was alarmed to see how high the numbers are and how many of those families that are waitlisted had intended to make Charlestown their home and be lifelong residents, including us. I live right across from Hood Park, that is building, a huge building, right down the street from the graphic lofts near Sullivan Square, which is right down the street from the casino. And I really see that the growth in our community is going to be a huge crisis for the public schools. We've come to terms with having our son be in private school next year, but I know a lot of people don't have that opportunity for private education. But we are hoping and praying that we can get into the public schools for our kindergarten year, which is very important to us. And we don't want to see our son be on a bus for over an hour to a different district. Right now, Charlestown is a little bit landlocked because of all the construction. Every way you enter or exit, there's construction going on, and it's really difficult to get anywhere else in the city. So we're hoping that you can take into consideration the possibility of opening up some more seats in our neighborhood for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Kincaid, Mike Kincaid, and Willie.
I couldn't even read it. She must live like blocks from me. Good evening.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Ms. Kincaid. My son is William. He is in the next to his last year of school. He has already attended eight schools. They are the Lee, the Conley, the Matter Hunt, the Jackson Man, the Mildred Ave, and Urban William is a student with autism. Next year, the school that he attends needs to have all of those services. This means his speech services, his occupational therapy services, his educational services, that's reading and math, his adaptive behavioral analysis services, and his vocational therapy services. That's the only way it's going to work. He needs to have all of those services included in the school. Again, it's the only way it's going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Kincaid and Willie Kincaid, and they will be followed by Julie Palaschi.
Dear members of the Boston School Committee, my name is Willie Kincaid. Thank you once again for letting me speak to you about my school, the Urban Science Academy, and the friends and teacher I had there. I told, I have told you in the past about how much I go into my school and being with my friends and want us all to stay together. Over the weekend, I had heard that not all of them are moving there together, and this really does bother me. I really do, I do not know very much about Burke School, but I'm worried we do not all go together. It would not be the same as it is now in West Roxbury. I had gone to meet about my mom and dad, and I heard that they will all move together, and now people say the same, but now has changed. I hope you don't change my, that I really want to go to the new school, and my teacher and friend, and they will not be with me. Thank you once again for letting me talk tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid.
Now, take this. Look at, look at. And go give it to Ms. Sullivan. Go over there, and then you can go back and play with your phone. Protocol, you gotta love it.
Here, Ms. Sullivan.
All right, go back and talk to mom. Sit with mom. He's going to be one of those people who's going to keep showing up after he graduates. Before I read my written comments, I need to address something. It was stated that the majority of us parents at the Urban Science Academy have already agreed to where we were going next year. Let me rephrase that, where our children are going next year. We did that before we found out what was happening. So in a month, ask that question again, because we realize we can withdraw where we signed for our kids to go. So if in a month, things have not changed, ask that question again. Now, before I begin, you're used to seeing me here. I've come here way too many times. I really did expect the last time for you to see me, and the next time was going to be at the last school committee meeting next year, when I was going to come and thank you for allowing my son to learn how the process works. But here I am. But I'm not by myself. And so I'm going to ask, because I've been asked before, where are other parents from West Roxbury Education Complex? So I'm going to ask my fellow parents, stand up, please. Show them we showed up. Now, now I'm going to read my statement. Also, if you've noticed, every time I've come here, I've always said I do not represent any group, elected official, anybody. I'm here because of my son. But tonight, for the first time in 19 years, believe it or not, I'm not by myself. And I'm speaking on behalf of parents who are uncomfortable speaking or who could not be here tonight. But they asked me to say these things for them. I am attaching with this document the sign-in sheet from a parent meeting I hosted last night at the West Roxbury Education Complex, the REC, ironically. Over the weekend, I was updated on the status of negotiations between the Boston School Department and the Boston Teachers Union over the upcoming transfer of REC special need programs to the Jeremiah Burke School for next year. I am not going to waste your time giving you the union's version of what I've been told, but what I will tell you is, it has something to do with teachers giving up their seniority at the Irving School for our kids to go to the Burke School. Our kids are being used as a pawn. Since the school department seemed to have neglected to update parents as to why they walked away from negotiations, I felt someone should and took it upon myself to convene the meeting. And by the way, I love that, you know, transparency stuff, notification, because as of last night, none of the 15 parents who attended had received any notification of what was going on, not one of us. I asked that question, did you receive a phone call, a robo-call, an email, a snail mail? Did someone come knock on your door and say, guess what? No. No one from the school department notified us what was going on. Was I surprised? No. Disappointed? Yes, but far from surprised of this lack of communication, since this has been the pattern during this entire process of closing our building and transferring our kids. If you can't make a meeting or know someone who did attend, you only find out about it after the fact from somebody who was there, or when it's too late. Which, by the way, thank you for finally learning from what you did to us and giving the folks at the Jackson Man more than enough heads up, more than enough. If nothing else, losing our school, if that is what came out of it, at least something good is going to come out of that. Understanding the format of this meeting, I am not here tonight to ask questions of the school department staff about what happened. On the other hand, I am here to invite any and all of the members of the school committee to meet with us, the parents of Urban Science Academy, and to meet with us, the parents of the REC. Come and talk with us and hear our concerns and fears for our children. I also invite you to, before I finish this, last night at the meeting, and by the way, I started calling folks Saturday night, and 15 people showed up. At the meeting, I said to everybody, you're going to walk away with more questions and answers, and that's what happened. I also invite you to bring department staff who can answer our questions about what is going on and what options we have if we are not happy about the sudden change in the plan. I hear the beepers, so I'm going to stop, but I will end by saying this, please, bring people from the department that can answer our questions, but please leave the acting superintendent at home, because I personally am tired of her acting like she gives a damn about my son. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Palaschi, followed by Connie Forbes and Jack Sennett.
Good evening. My name is Julie Palaschi. I've been a taxpaying resident of Charlestown for the past six years. Prior to living in Charlestown, I lived in various neighborhoods throughout Boston for the past 18 years. I settled down in Charlestown because I love the community and because I want to raise my family there. Recently, I entered the BPS lottery to get my son a K-1 placement for next school year. To our surprise, he did not place in any of the three schools we chose, and we received very high waitlist numbers. We've also learned that the numbers doubled at the Harvard Kent Elementary School, the Warren Prescott Elementary School, and tripled at the Elliott Elementary School. As I'm sure you're aware, this increase in the K-1 waitlist numbers for Charlestown families makes the chances for getting into one of our neighborhood elementary schools even harder next year, when we have to go through the same process of the BPS lottery system for kindergarten. As I'm also sure you're aware, we have major housing developments going on in Charlestown right now, the Hood Park development and one Charlestown development. Both will increase the number of children living in Charlestown dramatically in the next year, thus decreasing our chances even further for getting into one of our neighborhood elementary schools for kindergarten. As I'm also sure you're aware, guaranteeing my son a placement for kindergarten across the city, where he would have to take a bus at least an hour each way without the support of his community, puts him at a disadvantage to thrive in elementary school. Like many other Charlestown families, my family cannot afford the financial burden to send my son to private elementary school. If we cannot secure a seat for my son at one of the neighborhood elementary schools for kindergarten, we'll be forced to move out of Boston, the city we love, as will many other Charlestown families. Forcing Charlestown families to move out will cause our wonderful Charlestown community to be a temporary residence with an expiration date. So on behalf of some of the Charlestown families who want to continue living in Charlestown and raise our families there, I ask you tonight, what are your plans to provide more seats for our neighborhood elementary schools next year?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Connie Forbes, followed by Jack Sennett and Eric Wong.
Hi, I got to make this quick. My name is Connie Forbes. My son goes to the Urban Science Academy. To you, he might be just a number, but me, he is my son. Just to let you know, I'm one of those parents at Urban Science Academy that has not signed off on my son going to any program, let alone, you know, because I made phone calls and I've gotten answers as, you don't know what's happening. And I will tell you why I haven't signed off on it. My son was four years old when he entered Boston Public Schools. He has suffered from PTSD after being handled by Boston Public Schools in a two-year period. He was sent by himself in an ambulance to a hospital unattended. My brother got there. We were told by the police where he was, the schools didn't notify us. We got to the hospital, he was in a locked room, two guards outside, he's screaming and yelling inside. I don't feel comfortable, I don't trust the Boston Public Schools in handling the care of our kids. In addition to that, I was called, BCYF, Children's Services, called on me twice, because I questioned the way the schools were handling my child's care. And my son luckily did get help and services, but I don't know, if you're telling me you don't know what's happening to our kids coming up for the next school year, I don't feel comfortable signing off on any document. You, so just wait. So I know that the Dearborn was housed in the Burke, and it was a successful program. I don't know if they had the same issues that you're presenting the Parents of USA with, but it's been done before, so you should have a model in place that does do the same thing for us, for the parents at the USA. So, and just to let you know, not all special education is created equal. My son went to special education before he was transferred to a great school called McKinley, which I think you underrate their services for our kids. They're a fantastic program. Before that, he was in SPED. But the SPED, I found out later on, my son was not even in school half the time. He was being restrained. And I told him when he was there that he is sensitive to light, sound, noise, touch, et cetera. And they did nothing to help my son. I had to pay for private care myself to get a doctor to look at him. And I will tell you, the Boston Public Schools is not looked upon favorably by the hospitals in the area, especially Children's Hospital, who said they have been seeing this over and over again, where you have been doing the minimal amount of work to take care of our kids, who are the most vulnerable kids in the city of Boston's program. So I am not signing until you know what you're doing, because if you don't know and I don't know, we got to figure it out. And again, you've had this model with the Dearborn being at the Burke. It should not be rocket science. You should be able to repeat that. And the Burke is not a turnaround school. They've come out of turnaround, and I've heard that that was one of the reasons why there was a need to negotiate with the union. And I'm not listening to any stories until I see it on paper, because I was told the entire program would move over to the Burke. And now I'm hearing that that is not the case. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Our next speaker is Jack Sennett. He'll be followed by Eric Wong and Jillian Archer.
Good evening, Chair, members, superintendent. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jack Sennett. My son, Rowan, is in the Autism Strand, the symphonized program at Urban Science Academy. I've been following the news from the UK a lot recently, Brexit. It's fascinating. You know, the fifth largest economy in the world, the administration's presented with a fait accompli, a referendum to leave the EU. And after some consultations, Theresa May and the administration pulled the trigger on Article 50, said, yep, we're going to leave. We've got two years to figure it out. Don't worry, we'll negotiate with labor, we'll negotiate with the community, we'll negotiate the EU, we'll get it done. Well, here we are, two years later. There's no agreement. Nobody knows what's going to happen. They're extending it. They're looking at what they call a hard Brexit, which is basically leaving the relationships between the fifth largest economy in the world and 320 million people in Europe in complete chaos and tatters. So when I turn my eyes to Boston, I'm confronted with what I like to call Rexit. The administration's been presented with a fait accompli, a building that's collapsing and is dangerous. And after some consultation and evaluation of a couple of options, decides to pull the trigger, close the building. Says, don't worry, we'll negotiate with labor and the community and get an agreement and figure it out before the end of the year. We'll be good. Well, here we are at the end of the year, and there's no agreement. And we're looking at hard Rexit. No agreement, nothing in writing, and the default is chaos. The school committee is in a position to make sure this doesn't happen again. School committee can say, and perhaps can say now, no hard Rexit. Don't let this happen again. The next time, we're presented with a fait accompli, and let's face it, nobody plans for when a building falls apart. I mean, this is just, this happens. But what doesn't happen is... But what doesn't happen is accepting a situation where you don't have sign sealed and delivered, an agreement for exactly how that exit will occur. So we're not left with chaos. We're not left with families in shambles, and we're not left with nobody knowing what the heck's going on. I would also mention that some of the larger educational institutions, secondary and primary, secondary, and at the university level, have something that BPS, I believe, lacks: an endowment. I would challenge you to consider a Boston Educational Endowment so that we've got cash on hand to fill in the gaps for when we need to patch stuff together. I'm sure there are some bright young things in the finance office that would love, love an opportunity to create an endowment of some sort. And I'm willing to bet there's some expertise on the school committee that could provide some helpful voice in that process. Boston Educational Endowment, make it happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sennett. Next, we'll hear from Eric Wong, followed by Gillian Archer and Alex Freeman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Wong, and I'm a school psychologist for the Boston Public Schools. I support an elementary school and a sixth through 12th grade high school with over 1,500 students collectively, as well as the South End Head Start programs and early intervention programs. And as I enter my eighth year this September, I'll be the only bilingual Cantonese school psychologist still. I returned from paternity leave at the start of the school year hopeful that we would feel an impact from the additional supports recommended last year. By November, however, my school had, my school, sorry, my school and students had multiple traumatic experiences I was asked to support. A fourth grader's parent died unexpectedly following illness, two children that were at imminent risk of injury after a serious attempt at harm by a family member, the residual impact on the students following the severe injuries a student occurred after self-injuring themselves, and two elementary school siblings who have been separated from both family members within six months. This was in addition to the several crisis responses I attended across the district and the multiple suicide ideation risk assessments I completed, sometimes back-to-back on the same day. I want to reiterate that this all occurred between September and November while I was completing the role many of our school psychologists also have: special education evaluations, IEP services, Tier Two counseling and group supports, facilitating PBIS committees, supporting second step, attending student support teams, and instructional leadership team meetings, and consulting with teachers, parents, and community providers. Like any other parent, newborn or otherwise, I was hopeful and scared for my son when he was born. After returning from leave and addressing the situation I described earlier in the first three months, I'm terrified. I ask my wife and myself frequently, should we have had a child? Was it selfish of us to want to raise a child, knowing that the world is so scary and dangerous? It felt selfish that my wife and I had a child which we could both take a leave from work to care for while my students were in school and without supports. I want you to think for a moment about my first three months of school this year and what the last three months of the previous school year may have been like with just a substitute completing evaluations. What might we have missed? What could we have been prevented? And who was it that needed our support but we weren't there for? While we cannot prevent or plan for the experiences our students may have, the district can provide the appropriate number of specially-trained psychologists and PACs, people adjustment counselors, to help students address and recover from these experiences. While I'm thankful for the support Boston provided following last year's conversations, more is clearly necessary. I know that many individuals are consulted before decisions will be made, but I cannot help but feel that these decisions around funding and resources are made without consulting the voices of those tasked with doing the work. My colleagues and I echo and underscore the importance of appropriate ratios for PACs and one school psychologist per 700 students outlined by NASP and the task force for school safety and security established by Governor Patrick in 2014. Our positions consolidate and consume the silos and compartmented mental health and academic supports that have been made in recent years.
Mr. Wong.
Sorry. Just one more sentence. Just thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's many people who need to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Gillian Archer, followed by Alex Freeman and Kate Loftus-Camp.
Hello. My name is Gillian Archer, and I'm a school psychologist at The Guilde in East Boston. First, I want to thank you for hearing us last year. Not just listening, but hearing us. It was truly remarkable to hear a school committee talk about our ratios, and it was clear to us that you share our vision of adequately meeting the social, emotional, and behavioral health needs of the students in BPS. We all look forward to continuing to work with you until every BPS student has access to the appropriate numbers of psychologists and social workers. Last year, I served 1,000 BPS students across three different schools. This year, I serve 260 at The Guilde Elementary. The Guilde is a small school and receives about two days of school psychologist time each week through the Behavioral Health Services budget. I'm lucky, however, because the principal of The Guilde bought two extra days, allowing me to be almost full-time there. Budget cuts each year impact the stability of this model. Currently, the most The Guilde can expect is the centrally deployed two days a week. Through this shift, I've seen my role changed so drastically that I feel it is my duty to advocate how significant the role of a school psychologist can be in schools when we are given the opportunity to do what we are trained to do. The first way my work has changed is going from focusing on scheduling meetings, testing for special education eligibility, and finding space at three schools to a focus on prevention. The majority of my time at The Guilde is spent preventing behavioral health challenges from occurring and escalating. This work happens through the school's SEL team. We're a proud member of the comprehensive behavioral health model, which develops systems to implement social, emotional learning, and positive behavioral support in all classrooms throughout the school. The second way my role has changed is using behavioral data to make decisions about students who are at risk for mental health challenges. Myself and my university students work with approximately 55 students who have been identified at risk and use evidence-based curriculum to help them build the skills they need to be successful in the classroom and at life. These skills include developing coping strategies and social skills. I also support the inclusion classrooms by pushing in and doing whole-class social, emotional lessons, and consulting with the classroom teachers and paraprofessionals to develop these behavior plans. Lastly, when emergencies pop up, like students making self-harm statements or teachers struggling with a variety of issues, or there's a fight in the lunchroom and students need to restore a circle, I am there, and I am happy to answer that call. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Alex Freeman, followed by Kate Loftus-Camp and Adam Rodeau.
Hello. Last year, we spoke, as Eric referenced, regarding ratios of school psychologists with our National Association recommendation being 500 to 700 students per school psychologist, with the lower end of this range being recommended for urban settings. My similar is similar to Gillian's in that I am at one school full-time. I'm at Haley Pilot School in Inclusion K to eight, which is 450 students, and I hope today to highlight just examples of this week of what my work looks like in contrast to Eric's. For me, this week, I've been able to provide immediate follow-up for students. Two students engaging in cutting behaviors, coordinated meeting with teachers, and community-based counselor regarding a student's report of bullying. Met with a mother and a daughter regarding the parents' recent separation, created a support plan at school. Discussed with the mother if, when, and how she should discuss with her son his autism diagnosis. I oversee the supervision of four graduate students who work over 45 hours at the school each week. Provided our school-based rules committee examples of incident flow charts and major-minor behaviors. Had a rollout of school-wide hallway behavior plan. Hosted the CBHM leadership team reviewing our four annual goals. Conducted a phonological processing evaluation for a first grader. And I supervised eighth-grade lunch and recess, the hardest of all those responsibilities. I also spent time on our traditional duties, which have longstanding in our profession, been psychological evaluations as well as IEP counseling. And that's a significant part of my time, including attending three IEP meetings, preparing for seven IEP meetings the week after school break, and thus far, conducting six counseling sessions. Like Gillian, who I should have mentioned is one of our BPS educators of the year, I am at Haley full-time as a result of the principal's literal and figurative investment in my time being there, which is two days from the school budget. In illustrating this, I hope that you prioritize staffing school psychologists through district-level funding at recommended ratios.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kate Loftus-Camp, followed by Adam Rodeau and Julie Valencia.
Ms. Sullivan, I also have packets of written testimony from seven other school psychologists, and I'll be happy to take those for you.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Loftus-Camp, and I'm a school psychologist for Boston Public Schools. I currently serve 822 students at the McKay K through eight. I'm submitting my testimony today to talk about how my role as the full-time school psychologist at the McKay has allowed me to provide supports to students' needs that other school psychologists that are split across multiple schools in the district struggle to provide. At the McKay, for the past two years, I have been lucky enough to have a position that is full-time. It's a position that is paid half by the Behavioral Health Services Department and half by my principal's budget. I carry a full caseload of 30 counseling students, who I see one-on-one in small groups, planning lessons for those groups, including social skills, self-regulation, anxiety, and depression. I manage our community partners' caseloads to ensure that our students who are in crisis receive counseling services as soon as possible. Since coming to the McKay, I've been able to increase the number of students getting mental health supports from 50 to upwards to 150. We prioritize the mental health of our students. It's actually probably one of the things that set us apart, and the McKay became the school-on-the-move winner this year, I think, because of this work. There's still so much work to do. And in general, we also balance the other special ed portions of our job. To give you an example, I had 18 evaluations for the month of March, attended eight IEP meetings, which lasted for a total of 18 hours last week alone. I'd like my testimony to be a beacon, one where you can hear what it's possible for one school psychologist in every building to do because I work hard every day to be the best example I can be. Last year, I testified exactly for this reason. Unfortunately, due to budget cuts across the district, my position at the McKay will not be full-time next year. My principal had to make the difficult choice to not fund my half of the position that he has previously funded. This shouldn't have to happen. The needs of the students at the McKay aren't getting smaller, but my time with them will. By not having a full-time psychologist in the foundational budget of every school, principals are forced to make difficult decisions year to year that they shouldn't have to make. If the Behavioral Health Services Department was more appropriately funded and our ratio was livable, the financial support for appropriate ratios maintained, every amazing member of my department could have the time they need to devote to school communities, students, and their families. I just want to end by thanking you guys for hearing us as we come forward in loads, and I hope you consider us.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Adam Rodeau, followed by Julie Valencia and Valerie La Boy.
Good evening, school committee and Superintendent Perel. My name is Adam Rodeau. I'm a school psychologist for BPS. This is my 11th year in the field and sixth working in Boston. I'm here tonight in large part because I heard, or I really understood that the committee heard our department's advocacy last year for greater staffing for student needs. Specifically tonight, I just really had a response to an experience I had at a school committee meeting last year. In one budget meeting I sat in, I remember hearing a remark from Dr. Chang, who kind of just, away from the microphone, just kind of asked, why are special education rates so high in Boston? And I wasn't able to speak to that at the time, although I really wanted to. And I feel like I should also add that prior to coming to Boston, I worked in a district where they utilize school psychologists to implement response to intervention for kids. And I really wanted to make sure to use this time now as we, Ms. Perel is a champion of investing, or seeing the use of academic and social, emotional interventions in schools. And so I really felt like I wanted to highlight that tonight. You know, school psychologists can test, and we can do counseling. We are also the grief counselors when you see a tragedy on the news that they talk School psychologists are a lot more, and I just don't know if everybody quite understands that. We're really uniquely trained to develop both academic and social, emotional interventions in those supports within schools. The systems work. We have the skills and training to promote these changes at the school level, and the work there is designed to address academic and emotional concerns before they get to that critical level, which is a special education evaluation much of the time. I'm currently assigned to two schools with about 1,000 students between them. I typically am tasked with completing about 100 special ed evaluations a year and carry a weekly counseling caseload of about 16 to 28 students each year. With that current ratio, and that current ratio is not, as you've heard for some, and not an uncommon experience for a BPS school psychologist. I don't have comparison numbers, but I ask that you look around and ask surrounding districts if their school psychologists have that going on. As long as that ratio does not improve, we're not able to perform the district's responsibilities that we're trained to do that can bring down special education costs. Okay? That's, I just, I need people to realize that because I feel like that's, we're really underutilized in this role, and it's costing you money. It's driving all of these costs so high, and there's really a good way to address this. I just want to point that out. I thank you for your opportunity to address this, to let me address this concern. I've noted it in my time at BPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Julie Valencia, and she'll be followed by Valerie La Boy and Ernst Oliver.
Hello. My name is Julie Valencia, and I am a licensed bilingual social worker in the Behavioral Health Services Department in Boston Public Schools. I also have my Adjustment Counselor certification with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I want to say thank you to the mayor's office, who provided funding for my current position this school year when two additional district-wide social workers were added. So now there are eight of us divided across all of BPS. I represent 58 schools as one of the two bilingual Spanish-speaking social workers. We provide direct clinical work through counseling, home assessments, and crisis response. What Boston needs is a school-based social worker and psychologist in every school. So I've heard that numbers are important, so I've been trying to think, what numbers can I give you? So when I think about numbers as it applies to my work, I keep going back to the triangle. And if you work with schools, you know the triangle I'm talking about: the multi-tiered system of supports. And the numbers are five, 15, and 80. In the interest of time, I'm not going to explain the triangle, but basically, social workers help at every single tier, similar to the psychologists that have been talking about. The 80% of the students who need the basic, universal supports, social, emotional curriculum; the 15% that need the small group, pull out with a skilled, licensed professional on social skills, trauma, et cetera; and the top 5% who are our neediest students, who we spend a lot of our time with, for suicidal assessments, threat assessments, home visits, collaboration with outside agencies. The work with the 5% is complex. I have a quick story. One of my roles as a social worker is to interview parents for a sociological assessment for IEP meetings. 25% of the students I have assessed this school year in the past three months are homeless. During one of these home visits, my task was to talk with the mother about her son's history. But the family's living in a shelter. They had no heat. The food stamps were not available that month. The mother was depressed. There were issues between the family and the school, and there was also court documentation being sent to the family in English that the mother could not understand. This is one student. When we talk about the numbers, even one student and one family have complex needs. If you think about the district, the 5% of the students are 2,715. The kids that would need small groups are 13,575. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie La Boy, and she'll be followed by Ernst Olivier and John McDonald.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie La Boy. I'm the mother of three, three wonderful children, Nella, Jeremy, and Essel. My two boys have autism, and they go to the West Roxbury Educational Complex, and I received a letter that they were going to the Burke. I was very disappointed when I heard the news this week about the staff was not transitioning with the students, and I really don't understand. It's hard to find teaching teams that really care about the children, that really work together, collaborate, and create plans that really work. And so I don't understand why not take the teachers with the children. They already know them. So why separate the teams? My children have learned so much, both of them, Jeremy and Essel. Jeremy goes to the West Roxbury Academy, and Essel goes to the Urban Science Academy. Jeremy has finally found a place where he's understood. It has been a team effort. From the previous school, given the plans to the new school, Ms. Janine, his teacher, worked also in the Kilmer. And with the plan that they provided, she sat down with the group, and they created a new plan and implemented a new behavior plan that is working for him. Previously, in the school, ambulance and police had to be called because he has to be restrained because of his... because of his overstimulating and becoming aggressive. I was called many times at work because of my son's behavior. Since he started in the West Roxbury Academy, not once had been called. Or the ambulance had been called, or the police had been called. This group of people that work together have done a marvelous job. Jeremy's happy, he's loving his school, he loves his friends, his teachers. So now, BPS wants to send him to a school where nobody knows him or understands him, or where he doesn't know the people or trust them. And then all, I'm afraid that it was still all over again, and how could you allow something like this to happen to any child? I'm terrified of the nightmare happening again, and I'm sure the parents feel the same. They have gone through things that I have gone through with my family. Please don't separate these kids from their teachers, and please keep them together. And Jeremy, just to finish, Jeremy, you want to say?
My name is Jeremy. Please do not take my teachers away.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernst Olivier, followed by John McDonald and Kelly Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Ernst Olivier. I'm the father of Ernst Olivier, who is going to West Roxbury Academy right now. I'm here to thank Boston Public School for a good job they did for my son for the past seven years. Seven years ago, he can barely speak. Now he can communicate, he can read. He's doing things I never expected he would do. Thank to Boston Public School. I have no complaint until a month ago that they're gonna transfer him to a different school without his teachers. And kids like him need to be around people that they know, people they get used to. If they go to a different school without the people or teacher that they get used to, they will be panicking, because they will panic, because they will feel like they are around a bunch of complete strangers. There will be a big setback for them. I'm here to plead, please, if they can reconsider the decision by removing those kids without their teacher. And secondly, the location, the school that they're going to. And I'm not being prejudiced about the location of the school. I've been around that neighborhood for 35 years. It's a very violent neighborhood, and I witnessed kids get beat up, stabbed and shot going from that school. And I'm really concerned about my son, which I love very much, and all the parents also that have kids that go into that school. I wonder if they can choose another location which will be peaceful and quiet for those kids? And that's all I have to say. So I wish you guys can reconsider and can make a better decision to help those kids, because they really need help. They need Boston Public School to help them to succeed in life. For not going in an easy environment in the long run is not gonna help them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olivier.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll hear from John McDonald.
Mr. Olivier, Mr. Olivier. And for many of the parents from Urban Science Academy who are here, both Zach Houston, Steph Moreau and Cindy Nielsen are available to speak individually with each of you. And while I cannot comment on the status of contract negotiations, we do want to point out that our Office of Human Capital will be working with our Office of Special Education to reach out around individual cases to make sure that we are finding ways to meet the needs of your students. So, thank you.
For the record, I invite them to come to the school and talk with us. Thank you for all.
No, I appreciate that offer as well, Mr. Kincaid, and we'll be happy to follow up on that as well.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from John McDonald, followed by Kelly Gallagher and Jean Powers.
Good evening, Superintendent Perel and School Committee members. My name's John McDonald, and I am a People Adjustment Counselor at the Boston Public Schools, and I am celebrating my 40th year in the district. I'm talking to you tonight about social and emotional, mental health, as well as school safety. Part of my job is to work with a crisis team, which includes the Boston Police, the school police and any outside members, public health as well. And given that in 10 days, we'll be marking the 20th anniversary of Columbine, it comes up that we have experienced a lot in this country and as well in Boston, and school safety is one of our most important things that we have to focus on. And we in behavioral health are working collaboratively to not only look at facilities and buildings, but to provide tier-one prevention kinds of things, to help improve school climate, to help students feel connected to their schools. We conduct professional development on evidence-based intervention. We provide all the responses to the crises within the school district. We provide special needs assessments, we provide counseling, and we have worked collaboratively with lots of outside agencies, public health, Children's Hospital and School Police and Boston Police. We know that multi-tiered systems of support require access to licensed professional folks, and all of our department are licensed professional folks. We know that it's important for students to be able to have a place to turn. So wouldn't it be great when, if we could have one social worker and one school psychologist in every school? Right now, we have eight Department of Ed licensed social workers and 65 licensed psychologists, serving 56,000 students in our 125 schools from Mattapan to East Boston. And many days, I find myself traveling from Mattapan to East Boston and spending hours in the car when I could be in schools, providing services, and I think it's an incredible waste of money. So I am hoping that you will help us with this and understand our plea, because our students are with us for six hours a day, and we have a great opportunity to make great influences and teach them and give them the tools that they need for success in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly.
Congratulations on 40 years. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Gallagher, she'll be followed by Jean Powers and Noemo Gonzalez.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name's Kelly Gallagher. I'm a People Adjustment Counselor for Boston Public Schools, the Behavioral Health Services Department, and in that department, we have our school psychologists and our People Adjustment counselors. I'm a 34-year veteran of the Boston Public Schools, and I'm really happy to be here. And I, you know, I said it last year, I was here last year, I don't know if you remember me, but I really do love this job. I love the students of Boston, and I love the families and my colleagues. And I want to start with a positive thing. After testimony last year, the mayor did provide some investments to the People Adjustment Counselor staff. So we do have two additional People Adjustment Counselors this year. Let's say, that's wonderful, and I love it, but it's well below the recommended ratio for school social workers, which is what People Adjustment Counselors are. The recommended ratio by the National Association of School Social Workers is one school social worker to 250 students, so we're well below that. But even just two extra positions has lightened my, or given me more space in my week to do really great work, preventative work, and along with our People Adjustment Counselors. So I want to highlight that, there actually is a little bit more room, just with two. So think of what we could do with so much more. But we're able to do solution-focused, evidence-based counseling, group counseling. We're providing C-Bits counseling, which is comprehensive cognitive behavioral intervention for students who have experienced trauma. It's an evidence-based group counseling curriculum. We've established a fantastic coaching model for the Circles Social Boundaries Curriculum, which is, addresses social boundaries and how to explicitly teach those boundaries to our most vulnerable ASD and intellectually impaired population. We have done second, am I over?
No, 20 seconds.
Oh, sorry. So I just want to say how wonderful that is. So thank you, Mayor. But I also want to add one thing, and I'm going to give it just to you. Many public officials misquote the ratio and think that Boston actually is meeting the ratio. And I think it's because there's counselors written in the budget that really aren't counselors. So I've given you just a glossary of terms and definitions, not to be patronizing, but to kind of be instructive, that what you're seeing in the budget isn't really what's in reality. So I'm going to leave that with Elizabeth Sullivan, so that you can all have, take a look at that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Powers, followed by Noemo Gonzalez and Aziza Wilkerson.
Hi, my name is Jean Powers, and I'm the parent of a fourth grader at the Jackson Man K-8 School in Alston. I want to start by thanking you for reaching out to me and to the rest of the Jackson Man community. Giving us two years' notice makes things way harder for you, but it's really important to our community, and I do appreciate that. I feel that the letter you sent to families is misleading. It states that BPS is seeking alternate locations for the school, but there are no other school buildings available in Alston-Brighton, and you're not building a new school in the neighborhood. I ask that you call it what it is, a school closure. Opening a new school in another neighborhood is still closing a school in Alston. There are about 600 students at the Jackson Man, approximately half live in Alston-Brighton. According to the DOE, nearly 50% are English language learners, 26% are disabled, 89% are high-needs. The Jackson Man has one of the largest and most successful autism programs in the city. None of our Alston-Brighton schools are currently equipped to absorb such large special needs populations. While we enter this transitional period, I ask you to recall Eviewing's research showing that students begin to lose ground when a school closure is announced. Please talk to the teachers at the Jackson Man and ask them what they need in order to help their students through this time, and then give it to them. For my part, I request that you restore the librarian position, which is supposed to be cut this year, and buy books and technology for the library. These items can go to another school in a couple of years, but our students need them now. Increase the school's counseling and SPED services. We need more support for students and families to help them through the transition. Provide supports to teachers to help them prepare the students for leaving their school, and provide additional assistance to fourth and fifth graders who will be taking the ISEE over the next two years and all the MCAS grades. Because half the Jackson Man students will likely be moving into other Alston-Brighton schools, there's an immediate need for additional resources at those schools. Immediately restore the City Connect position at the Winship. Restore the science and arts teachers to the Gardner. Whatever other positions are being cut at other schools, restore them. Every school needs a full-time nurse. It needs to happen immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we hear from Noemo Gonzalez, and she'll be followed by Aziza Wilkerson.
Ms.
I'm a little nervous, so I apologize if.
Please take your time.
I'm the parent of an autistic child. And I don't know what security blanket is for other people, but I could tell you what my son's security blanket is. It was his school, the Roxbury, sorry, the West Roxbury Academy, which was taken from him, and that was his second home. That's why he looked forward to going every day, being happy with his teachers, and his friends and his paraprofessionals. Now that that was taken away from him, they're telling him that his teacher is not going to be able to go with him. His only concern is, how come? Why? If they already took my house from me, why are they going to take my mom? Because that's how she looks at her, like that's her second mother when he's in school. She understands him, she's been with him for five-plus years, his friends have been with him, paraprofessionals are very, very good people, they've taught him all he knows. He's a master at math. And for him to lose all these things at once, I don't think that's fair. You know, I don't know how many people can say the word vulnerable, when they actually have not lived with one of these kids. You need to have one of these precious children to understand the word vulnerable. My son is very strong-willed, he's a smart child, but this has affected him very much. Psychology, psychologically, physically and mentally, in every aspect of his being, he's been affected by these decisions. So all I ask is, is it so difficult to send his teacher and paraprofessionals with him to a new school that he's new, he doesn't know his surroundings, or the people are going to be around him? I don't think that's too much to ask. So that's all I'm asking from this panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Gonzalez. Sorry. Sorry. And just to clarify from one of my earlier remarks, the, and Cindy Nielsen again is available to talk, but paraprofessionals, I do want to clarify, one-to-one paraprofessionals are assigned directly from central office by the Special Education Department, and they place a very high priority on that continuity. So that is something over which we have unique influence, and so while there is still an ongoing conversation around the hiring, around the paraprofessionals, please, again, do speak with Ms. Nielsen, but that is something that the district can unilaterally prioritize. Obviously, if individuals make different choices, that, there is that, but that is a priority that we've set.
Our next speaker is Aziza Wilkerson.
Hello. So I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to remind you about the main point that us WRA and USA parents are trying to get across, because your comment a little while ago about speaking to three people about individual circumstances makes me think you aren't getting it. We are not looking to speak to someone about individual situations. We are a community. We want answers that work for all of us. We want unity. We want the program to stay together, teachers and students alike. It seems like there's a lack of accountability. Who on the administrative level is keeping people accountable in regards to this process of moving? There are months between now and September, the stalling needs to stop. If this was something that affected you on a personal level, you would do whatever it takes to get it done. It is not the teacher's fault that this is happening, it is not the children's fault. Unlike one of our speakers before, I believe a building becoming so inhabitable that it must be shut down at the end of the year is preventable. I worked in healthcare for 10 years, and I know that there is a mandatory maintenance along with agencies who oversee it. Someone dropped the ball. With that being said, I implore you, give the USA teachers what they need to move with our kids. I'll repeat it, give the teachers what they need to move with our kids. How can you move a specialized program without moving the teachers who run and know the program? It is not the teachers, if it's not the teachers, who on earth looked at the Burke and said it was a viable option? Who looked at the space and said, yes, this will work? As I close, I'll say again, please, give the USA teachers whatever they require to successfully move the program to the Burke, or a safer place would be nice, but if it's going to be the Burke, the Burke. After all, you are Boston Public Schools, focus on children.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for general public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is the consent calendar, which consists of grants for approval totaling $212,680 and one international travel request. And I want to alert my fellow members to a special note here on the international travel request. Due to a typographical error on the travel request that was previously approved by the committee on the consent calendar on March 29th, Boston Latin Academy was omitted from the unanimously approved trip at that time. So in the future, for efficiency, the Department of Global Education will clarify that one collective application is acceptable to accommodate schools that endeavor to collaborate on international trips in the future. So now I'd like to turn it over to the interim superintendent for any final comments on the consent calendar.
None on this one. I believe the school committee received a memo with a little more information about a follow-up question regarding financial literacy, which we will continue to share with you.
And thank you to Anu Jainath from our grants office for that clarity on the financial literacy grant from our last meeting. Excuse me. Let me open it up now to questions and comments from the committee on the consent calendar. No further questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Thank you, Dean Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver Davila. Is there any discussion or objection? Is there any objection to approving the consent calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Our next action item this evening is the approval of three charter amendments for the Boston Green Academy Horace Mann Charter School. You recall that at our last meeting, Boston Green Academy Headmaster, Mr. Matt Holzer, who is with us again this evening, welcome, Headmaster Holzer, and the BGA Governing Board Chair Alex Chu presented three charter amendment proposals for the committee's consideration. First, a memorandum of understanding with the district for 2016 to 2021. Second, an updated enrollment policy in accordance with BGA's new Chapter 74 Vocational Environmental Science and Career Technical Education Program. And third, an accountability plan outlining the ways in which BGA can be assessed outside of the state's established accountability system. I'll now turn it over to the interim superintendent for some final comments.
I'm going to invite Headmaster Holzer to come up to the table in case there are any additional comments or clarifications that he can provide. But I can say in response to school committee members' questions, Headmaster Holzer worked with our legal department and with his own board to make a couple of the clarifications or technical changes that you had requested that have been reviewed by our legal advisor and specifically related to the program coordination with BPS and student discipline. So BGA has replaced the language to read as following, read as follows. BGA certifies that it has adopted the BPS Code of Conduct for the term of this agreement. I believe that was one of the clarifications sought. The second adjustment relative to student enrollment, recruitment, and retention, Section 11F, BGA has added language that it, quote, "will adopt graduation requirements that include, at a minimum, those required by BPS," end quote. I will also mention that Headmaster Holzer has volunteered to serve on the high school work group focused on graduation requirements and Mass Corps Program of Studies. So it was a fortuitous match there. Anything else you want to add, Matt, on the clarifications or changes?
No, we were pleased to work with the district on this. We appreciate the questions from the committee last time. We hope we've addressed the clarification questions that were answered.
Well, thank you, Headmaster Holzer, and thank you again for recognizing the importance that this committee places on the Code of Conduct as well as the graduation requirements that are at the heart of some of the most important work that we're doing in the district right now. So we appreciate you working with us certainly, and we want to thank the legal advisor's office again for responding in earnest to the questions that the committee placed at the last meeting. I'll open it up now to members for questions and discussion. Well, hearing none, I want to entertain a motion to approve these three charter amendments for Boston Green Academy as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion?
I simply, may I state at this point, since the motion is on the floor, I would like to thank the headmaster and his board in particular for agreeing to certify about the Code of Conduct. That's it. To have your board do that in the interim over the two weeks is deeply appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Any further objections or discussion on the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you once again, Headmaster Holzer. I owe BGA a visit. I would love to come out and see your new Voc-Tech program and look forward to hearing more good things from your school as it expands and continues to prosper.
Thank you all very much. You're welcome. Anytime. We appreciate the continued support of the BPS.
Very good. Thank you again. Thank you, as Mr. O'Neill noted, thank you, board, as well, and thanks specifically to Board Chair, Mr. Chu.
I will pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final action item is a one-year, excuse me, contract extension with the district's transportation provider, Transdev. And you will recall that at our last meeting, Chief of Operations, Mr. John Hanlon, and Assistant Director of Finance for the Department of Transportation, Ed Pesch, presented the interim superintendent's recommendation that the district exercise a one-year extension option for its contract with the transportation operator, Transdev, covering the period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. I see that COO, John Hanlon, has approached, and I'll now turn it over to the interim superintendent for some final comments.
Thank you, John, for coming up. So John, of course, will be able to answer any specifics, but the highlights of the recommendation at the last school committee meeting was that exercising the second, if I'm not mistaken, John, the second of our one-year renewal options was in the analysis of the transportation team in consultation with the city and with our finance department, the most prudent option, because going to market in a, where there is a limited supply of companies able to do this, was, had a very strong chance of returning us either to the same bidder at a higher price or a more costly contract. So this was the recommendation. John, anything you want to add?
What I would just remind the school committee, and thank you again for your consideration of this, is the rates currently charged by Transdev to run this bus operation are only slightly more than the bus operator 15 years ago, and are far, far lower than the competitors who bid on this contract five years ago, or six years ago now, and when it was won by Transdev at that time. As Superintendent Perle mentioned, we are fully confident that the gap between Transdev's fees, so to speak, and the next competitor has only grown since then because the market has actually shrunk. In addition to that, we know that startup costs of bringing in a new contractor to provide this service would be severe, and we would have year-one increases to transportation costs in order to allow for a new vendor. Lastly, I will say that although the transportation system is always a work in progress, and we're constantly working with Transdev to refine their practices and to deliver a good product, safe and reliable transportation for our students, we know full well that working with them is a known commodity. They're a team that's worked very closely with us over the next few years, over the last few years, I should say. Bringing in a new provider obviously leaves a lot of questions and uncertainty that would sort of cast some doubt in the year ahead if needed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. I'll open it up now to the committee for questions or discussion. Mr. O'Neill.
Just one quick question. Mr. Hanlon, I know at the beginning of the year, we had some challenges with start, with the start of the year, and there was a lot going back and forth between the district, the union, and Transdev. Do you feel the working relationship has gotten better with Transdev?
Yes, and I think the working relationship has to continue to get better with the union as well. Some of the challenges we had earlier in the year were due in part to driver availability. We need to just continue to do what we can to make sure we're working closely with the union to ensure that those problems don't come up again this summer.
But the relationship between the district and Transdev, how do you feel it is at this point?
Forgive me, because this is going to sound trite, given the importance of the vote tonight, but I actually feel that in my close to three years in this role, this is the best that we've had that relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there further questions from the committee? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve a one-year contract extension with transportation operator, Transdev, covering the time period from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you once again, Mr. Hanlon, for keeping us up to date on this relationship.
Thank you.
Move on now to our first report, which is a superintendent search process update. Tonight, I'm pleased to share with the committee, and you have a memorandum in your packet, and for those that are in the audience, there are also copies out in the hallway. A memo that I've shared with the membership earlier this evening, proposing a tentative schedule for superintendent finalist public interviews for the week of Monday, April 22nd. And I want to note once again for my fellow members that that schedule is contingent and tentative, and exact dates will be determined based on the number of finalists that have yet to be confirmed by the search committee, of which two of our colleagues are members, as well as candidate availability. But nevertheless, you know, as a body, we have asked, Vice Chair Oliver Davila and I have asked a number of individuals, close to 20 members of our community, to help us out in this next phase of the process. And as those folks are very invested in our schools and in our community, they have very busy schedules. And so at this point, as we close, get close to the process, we felt it pertinent to reserve the time on their schedule so that they would have the availability to devote their volunteered time to assisting us with this process. And for those of you that are familiar with recent processes to select a superintendent in the district, this proposed process that you'll see in the memorandum and has been already discussed a bit in the media, is very similar to what we did in 2015 as well, and I believe it even had its origins as far back as 2007, when Carol Johnson was hired in the district. And the process is simply each finalist will spend one day in Boston participating in a series of public interviews with the school committee, as well as in panel discussions with BPS students, parents, teachers, school leaders, and community partners, those 20-odd individuals that I mentioned just a moment ago. So once again, the daily tentative schedule for finalist interviews, which is subject to change, I do want to reiterate that caveat, based on concluding our search process in a timely manner, and candidate availability is summarized in the memorandum that's been distributed. I do want to quickly summarize it for folks that are watching at home and in the audience. It's expected that for the public portion of each of those interview days, the, each finalist to which a day is devoted will begin their day at approximately 10:30 in this room for a 90-minute interview session with a panel that will be focused on our community partners, those that work with the district to help support the district and its students and its work. After lunch, the school committee will then convene in this room once again for our public interview of the candidate, the candidates, excuse me. Then at 4:00 PM, the candidates will move to a school for a 90-minute interview panel focused on students and teachers. And we've intended to bring the candidates each day out into the field to be closest to where the teaching and learning is happening in our system with our students and teachers. And then finally, at 6:30 PM, the candidates will return to this room for a 90-minute interview session focused on parents and school leaders. I want to remind folks that all interview panels will be open to the public, and the interview sessions that will be conducted here in this build, in this room, will be broadcast live on the web. So I want to, before I open it up to questions, I just want to include a couple note of thanks, notes of thanks to folks that have been involved in this process to date. First, I want to extend a sincere thank you to the nearly 20 people, once again, that have stepped forward to participate in the community interviews. This is a wide, there's a wide array of people that are involved here. We have, out of the 19 people that are listed in the memorandum, nine of them are current BPS parents. That's an extraordinary amount and reflects the customer service focus that we're hoping to continue to improve upon in our district. We also have a number of teachers, school leaders. We have the chair of the Boston City Council's Education Committee helping to facilitate one of those panels. Councilor Inisess Abi George will be co-facilitating the student and teacher panel that will be happening out in the field. She'll be co-moderating that with Elvis Rodriguez, who is a junior at the Snowden International High School and is also a member of the search committee. He's the first student that we've had as a member of a superintendent search committee in the district's collective history that we can recall, and so we're very proud of the work that Elvis has done for us to date and on behalf of this district. We've also got a central office administrator who's leading the work on our closing opportunity achievement gaps, which is the most important work that this district and this committee has identified for our district to move forward on, as well as what we want our leaders to focus on. And, you know, once again, we have a number of other individuals from the community that are deeply invested in helping to support our district and our students towards success. And finally, I want to, once again, thank and extend, you know, my overwhelming awe at the tireless devotion that our superintendent search committee has put into this process over the last, I believe it's eight months since the beginning of this school year. Certainly to our colleague, Vice Chair Oliver Davila, and her co-chair, Dr. J. Keith Motley from the University of Massachusetts at Boston, as well as our fellow colleague on the search, Mr. Michael O'Neill. Search committee has been working diligently to draft a job description, recruit top talent, interview candidates, select a search firm. That's not all in the correct order, but just trying to recall all the things that they've been doing over this time. Couple facts for you, this, since October, the committee's met for more than 64 hours, and that includes six citywide listening sessions, eight public meetings, and over 36 hours in confidential interview sessions and deliberations that have yielded a robust, thoughtful conversation between a diverse set of highly qualified candidates and committee members. So I want to thank you all once again for your tireless devotion. All good things must come to an end, and I think we're driving towards that end quite soon. And as noted in previous updates, for those that are paying attention to this process, we want to remind folks that, you know, the position's attracted a lot of interest from a diverse and talented pool. We originally had 57 candidates, as a reminder from our previous updates that we provided the public, that had expressed some interest in the position, and we eventually had 39 candidates that submitted their materials for consideration by the search committee. And since that time, we've continued to whittle down, or I should say, the search committee has whittled down that pool of 39 through interviews and callbacks, and we are driving towards a conclusion in that process shortly. So before I open it up to questions and comments from the committee, I just want to remind folks that this committee will look forward to receiving those recommendations, as well as the public. And once again, the public is encouraged to attend or watch the live-stream panel sessions and send feedback about the candidates to superintendentsearch@bostonpublicschools.org. I will add one other thing. We haven't finalized the format or posted anything about it yet, but we will be collecting feedback from individuals in the community during that week of public interviews, and we'll look to distribute that to the entire school committee as we make our selection for the next superintendent of schools. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Ms. Robinson.
I just want to join you in thanking Alex and the committee for your tireless work to get us thus far. And you answered my, you answered my second question, which was, how will the general public be able to be, participate besides coming to them? So they will be able, will people be able to raise questions or ask questions at the interviews, or just provide feedback?
Well, the interview panels are being moderated, and each panel has been, I believe there's at least six individuals on each panel, five panelists and one or two moderators in each instance. So what we've attempted to do is to create a broad and diverse set of individuals... So what we've attempted to do is to create a broad and diverse set of individuals to ask as many questions within that 90-minute period as they can to try to address the issues that are before them on each of the panel topics. So I don't think that there will be an opportunity for audience questions, but I'll leave it to the moderator's discretion if there's time remaining to engage in an informal conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'm sure Mr. O'Neal and Ms. Oliver Davila have had all their questions answered over the last eight months. We'll try to get that 64 hours up a few, a few more before the end. Well, I want to thank you all, my fellow colleagues that have been part of this process, for your deep and engaging work here. And we look forward to hearing more from you in the coming weeks and days. We will move on now to our next report this evening, which is the interim salary and non-personnel payments for external funds report. As committee members will recall, this is a report that we typically receive around this time each year. And I'm, I can see she's already approaching, so I'm not inviting, but recognizing Ms. Anu Jayanth, our Director of Grants and External Funding for the district, welcome to present her remarks. First, I'd like to turn things over to the interim superintendent for her input.
We'll keep this very short. So as the chair mentioned, every year, we must receive approval from the school committee for the interim salary payment order for any personnel paid with external funds. So these would be grant-funded positions, roles, or tasks and projects. The funds would come from grants projected to be awarded for FY '20 for approval at future school committee meetings. And so I will leave to Anu Madapa Jayanth to do the explanations or answer any questions you might have.
Happy to answer any questions that you may have. As Superintendent Perel mentioned, this is something that we come before the committee for every year. These are all the grants that we project to receive for FY '20. We do these projections based on historical trends, conversations with the Council of Great City Schools, conversations with the state, et cetera. And we're requesting that not just the interim salary payment order, but also that non-personnel lines be approved as well in order to reflect what's provided to our city auditor.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jayanth. And I'll open it up now to the committee for questions or discussion. We're hearing none. I want to thank you for this brief update. And, you know, once again, we look forward to your expert predictions on where our grants will land over the next year with the input of our colleagues at the Council of Great City Schools. You're typically on the mark, and we appreciate that. And we'll look forward to taking action on this at the next meeting based on those recommendations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on now to our next report, which is an update from the Office of Special Education. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Ms. Cindy Nielsen, to please step forward with her presentation. But first, I'd like to turn things over once again to our interim superintendent, Ms. Laura Perel, for her opening remarks.
Thank you. And as Cindy gets settled and set up there, the, this is another annual report and update, although the work of the Office of Special Education crosses so many of our cross-functional issues and ongoing work to meet the needs of students. So you do frequently see Cindy Nielsen up here, speaking and/or supporting the academic, social, emotional, and student support work across our schools. The, I do want to mention one difference this year is that often or frequently, the Office of Special Education presents on the same night that SPEDPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, presents. This year, we just couldn't quite get the calendars to align. So while Cindy is presenting tonight, Ms. Carolyn Kane, who's currently one of the co-chairs of SPEDPAC, will present on, I believe, May 8th is the rescheduled date that worked best for her. And Cindy will join her then to answer any additional questions that may come up out of the exchange. But we'll start out by providing the overview of the department now. And with 20% of Boston Public Schools students identified as having special needs, that's 11,000 students on IEPs. The Office of Special Education provides crucial services to a significant portion of our student population. So Cindy will provide an overview of the students we serve in special ed, along with some of the changes to next year's special education budget and data to better understand how and where we are serving these students. And this work also includes an increase in the percentage of special needs students learning in inclusive settings. And with that, I'll turn things over to Cindy.
Thank you. Chairman LaCanto, Superintendent Perel, and school committee members, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight on special education in Boston Public Schools. We are in our fourth year of working toward the vision that our students have equitable opportunities to engage in innovative, high-quality instruction in the least restrictive environment, empowering each youth to achieve at high levels, leading to post-secondary success. To attain this vision for all of our students with disabilities, we have focused on working, on building inclusive opportunities in five key areas. The Office of Special Education is charged with providing individualized education programs for students with disabilities that are found eligible. When coupled with building inclusive practices, we must understand that class, that the word inclusive is not synonymous with inclusion. Inclusive practices are a mindset where we provide the supports students need for access to the general education curriculum as much as possible. To that end, there will always be a need for all types of settings, from full inclusion to out-of-district placements. And in all of those settings, we are constantly working for students and families in five key areas. They are identification and placement, quality of instructional supports and services, students, family, and community engagement, equity and accountability, and transition services for our students 14 to 22. This slide provides promising data around the work that we have focused on regarding providing services in the least restrictive environment. There are two things to highlight. First, the hard work of school leaders, teachers, parents, related service providers, ABA providers, support staff, and central office administration has decreased our students in substantially separate classrooms and schools since school year 2014-15. In school year 2014-15, we had about 44% of our students in substantially separate classrooms and schools. This school year, 18-19, we are at 36%, a reduction of 8%. In school year 14-15, we had 56% of our students in full or partial inclusion. This year, we have 64% of our students in partial or full inclusion. The second highlight is that there is minimal difference in the movement of students to inclusion when comparing students with disabilities and English learner students with disabilities. We will continue to be facetious in this work as we do not want to create an opportunity gap. The collaboration between special education and the Office of English Learners is paramount to the success of our shared students. Since school year 16-17, we have increased the number of inclusion classrooms from 408 to 479, an increase of 71 classrooms. And we've reduced the number of substantially separate classrooms in our mild disabilities by six classrooms. As we are proud of the reduction of students in substantially separate placements, we're also very aware of the work that we need to continue to do. This slide breaks down our students with disabilities population by race and primary disability. This is a critical disaggregation of data, as it is through this that we are able to see where disproportionality exists. We categorize primary disabilities into three areas: high incidence, low incidence, and spectrum disabilities. High incidence disabilities are and can be determined by an educational, school-based team. These disabilities are communication, emotional impairment, intellectual impairment, and specific learning disabilities. Low incidence disabilities rely heavily on medical diagnoses, and much of the information we need can and is provided by the medical community. For example, students with vision impairment or multiple disabilities would come to us with information from outside parties that inform how we develop our individualized programs. Spectrum disabilities include our students with autism and developmental delay. Using the data to determine where we need to focus our work, take, for instance, that Black students are 44.1% of students with emotional impairment, but represent 35% of the total student population. In addition, Hispanic students with specific learning disabilities represent 51.3% of students, when Hispanic students are 42% of our students overall. While this is not new information to the district and has long been studied, the asset team will be focusing on this as a common goal moving forward. An area that has not historically been discussed is how Boston Public Schools provides special education services to our students that do not attend BPS schools. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, mandates that the public school district is responsible for locating, evaluating, and if found eligible, providing special education services to students in secular, non-secular, and independent schools and homeschool students. In practice, BPS has two main responsibilities to students that do not attend Boston Public Schools. One is to continue to guarantee free and appropriate public education under Massachusetts regulations, and two is to provide a proportionate share of IDEA to supplement instruction for those students. Boston has been steadfast in its obligations around FAP. However, based on a recent audit by the federal government to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, all Massachusetts districts have been mandated to review and develop plans for the implementation of proportionate share. We continue to work with DSE and the private and parochial schools to improve and streamline With a great emphasis on literacy and its importance as the foundation to lifelong learning, special education addresses in two specific ways. The first way, and considered a tier-one support, meaning it is for all students, was used, was used through preventative funding in IDEA to roll out foundations in grades K-2 to second grade. Partnering with the Early Childhood Department, we are in our second year providing training in the needed materials to all teachers in K-2 to second grade. Foundations is a phonics program that uses a multisensory approach in a rules-based manner to teach students decoding and encoding. The explicit teaching methodology has shown great results with students, specifically students that may have more needs, in English learners. As of February 1st, 2019, we have trained 405 teachers. The investment of foundations has helped us to strengthen our data and has impacted our special education referral numbers at these grade levels. In comparing school year 16-17 to school year 17-18, 17-18 being the first year of the rollout, we had an average decrease of 19% of special education referrals in grades K-2 to second grade. The second approach would be considered tier-three for a specific set of students. Over the past three years, we have invested in Wilson Reading Program Training and Certification and Orin Gillingham Training. To date, we have trained 342 teachers in this specialized program. These methodologies are provided based on IEP needs. We are in our second year of providing direct supports to schools through centrally-based inclusive support teams. This year, we focused more on a collaboration between the team and classroom teachers by working with a specific 20 schools. Inclusion teachers in these schools were provided the option of weekly support. The supports could include many areas like support developing academic and behavioral strategies. The purpose of this team continues to be to support schools and students in the least restrictive setting. Another area the Office of Special Education focused on this year was to develop and provide more professional development. The nine modules listed are each 10-hour units made up of two-hour blocks. This allows for the ability to provide the module over time and in-depth, or in smaller two-hour sessions, that target a specific topic within the module. Our parent coordinator and the entire department continues to work on connecting with our families and community partners more. We have continued our partnership with the Federation for Children with Special Needs to provide informational sessions in areas like understanding the special education process. Workshops in Chinese, Haitian Creole, and Spanish are coming up in spring 2019. We are in the second year of the EdPlan rollout, and the benefits have allowed us more flexibility in documenting services for our students, and IEP at a glance for ease of use for our staff, better compliance monitoring, and better communication with families. With EdPlan Connect, our parent portal, we have had 2,002 IEP signed electronically since its launch in June 2018. We continue to build and expand our external partnerships that provide their expertise in transition planning for our students. In addition, the tireless work of the Strive team connects our students and schools with these opportunities, while they also provide consultation and support to students in middle and high schools. Looking ahead to school year 19-20, we are looking to further expand our ABA services provided by BPS employees by increasing ABA specialists and adding one board-certified behavior analyst. We would like to create a six-member team that will help to streamline how we provide special education services to students attending non-BPS schools. We look to create a leadership role in central office that will be responsible for supervising the nine network liaisons. The work will be focused on more direct oversight of direct school supports. Lastly, we are also happy, we are also happy to create a mentoring stipend for our coordinators. We believe that through mentoring from veteran coordinators to our newer coordinators, there will be direct support for parts of the work that is more nuanced and requires more modeling, such as navigating difficult conversations, eligibility determination, transportation, and extended school year. About 65 people make up the Office of Special Education, and the other FTEs that are listed here are deployed to the schools. It is because of the tireless dedication of the central office team that we see movement happening in the district. Their commitment, passion, and resolve to always do better for our students is very inspiring. Some members of this team are here tonight, and may I introduce them? Can I?
Oh, please do, actually, because I was going to ask you to have your staff, who I suspect are making up a large chunk of the folks in the center section in the back. And please do introduce them, but I also want to take a moment on behalf of the school committee, certainly on behalf of the central office in general and the schools, to thank all of you for the extraordinary work you do every day. So thank you all. Standing in the back, would all the members of the Office of Special Education who are here with us tonight, please stand?
And feel free to introduce away.
I'm going to call you by name so you can stand up then, too, because I want to make sure your name is heard, because I'm sure people recognize your name. We have Patrick Alexis, Nikki Reardon, Erica Andrayson, Erin Hurley, Steph Moreau, Maggie Tierney, Elliot Nerland, Marilyn, Mary Ann Malloy, Jennifer Sweeney, Catherine Morrissey, Mary Marcella, Brian White, Christine Paneris, Deb Gately, Andrea Als Thomas, Heather Geary, Evelyn Adario, Zach Houston, Ike Saburo Sanchez, Carrie Antarsia, Leema Jean Baptiste, and Janet Morrison. Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Now available for questions.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Nielsen, and thank you once again to your staff. You know, we know that, that 20% of our population, that's 11,000 students, and we have a lot of good stories among those 11,000 students for the way that our district and the staff within our district treats those students and provides appropriate services for students every day, and really, you know, makes a meaningful difference in students' lives. So we deeply appreciate the work that you do, and we're thankful to have you here and hear about some of those highlights tonight. So I will open it up now to members for questions and discussion. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you for your presentation. Got a couple of questions. One, it still disturbs me when we look at the race and we write Black, when we know that Black is very, very diverse within our district. It's got English language learners, kids from all over the world. Is there a way of getting that broken down, particularly when we begin to look at the very large percentages of Black students that are making up significant parts of our, like, you know, emotional?
Impairments.
Particularly, so that getting some of that disaggregated would be very, very helpful and to understand basically what we're talking about. And then, I know you've got a wonderful team, but I have to make the remark that when I think again what our district looks like, and I see the leadership of our team, I wonder where there could be some cultural flashes in any number of things. And wondering what does the rest of the, what is the diversity of your team overall?
I can definitely get you the official breakdown, the percentage of the breakdown.
Both here, but also within the classrooms, et cetera.
Yes, exactly. We can take that.
And then the other, I guess another piece of that, too, would be language is spoken. And, you know, how well are we doing with getting more, particularly special needs teachers speaking the languages of the children, family? And then, when we talked, the other question, how was about the parent portal? Are the materials translated for families?
The hard copies are translated. The parent portal right now is not accessible.
Parent portal is not?
But the, every, the paper copies are.
Okay. You also talked about the decrease of 19% of special ed referrals in grades K-2. I hope that's a good thing, because I'm wondering, do they increase in grades three and above? Because we didn't do it, and we know that the sooner that we address or identify. And I've spoken to a number of parents over the last couple of months who've shared their frustrations of having a sense that there was something wrong with their child earlier on, and now being in the third, fourth, or fifth grade, and finally getting a diagnosis. So I'm hoping that, you know, we're not using this decrease as a way of saying we're doing a good job, but then finding out later that there really were things that... doing a good job, but then finding out later that there really were things that we could do differently. And I know that there's a lot of work going on in the pre-K classrooms, and the question is, how are the things that people are doing in those pre-K, K-1, 2 grades being continued as children go on? And is there good communication between the early childhood folks and the early elementary folks so that we're making sure we're pushing forwards? The other questions I have in general are just about parents and how happy are parents with what we're doing? I know we're doing a lot, but the question, I mean, as we heard tonight, the concerns that parents have, I mean, one thing, the testimony was clearly, the kids are learning. So, we've got great programs going on. People get, you know, are very happy about what's happening, but then these transitional moments can become blips. So, I guess I'm wondering, how overall are we communicating with parents and how happy are they overall with the services that we're providing?
So, I think that definitely, thinking about the testimony heard tonight, that's definitely, this is a challenging time, that we're definitely making sure that we're providing as many services as possible to come through this transition. I think overall, I think that there's going to be challenges that happen in special education, and me and my team are very attuned to knowing that this is a pretty sensitive topic in education in general. We do believe that families are doing, are happy and doing well, and then they know that they're, hopefully, that we're trying to get out to schools that are, to families, that the school coordinator is the first place to go, and then if not there, we do have different places in Central Office to come to get support if they need it there. So, I know my office does get a lot of phone calls where we are helping families. It has always been, since I've started in this role, my goal to make sure that families know how to access Central Office as well if they're having trouble and challenges in the schools. That is something we're still continuing to work on. The family support coordinator is really crucial in helping us to make partnerships within the community as well to make sure that we're not just with the Federation, but also with community-based organizations to get closer to families in their neighborhoods and where they're coming from. So, that is definitely something we continue to work on, and any suggestions are very welcome to do that better.
Okay. My last question is about inclusion. I know inclusion is something that we aspire to, and I guess the question is, is inclusion always what every child needs, or are there children that really, that inclusion can't work for even though the family may want? And how do we help address that? And then, on the flip side, how do we support inclusion classrooms when they get a wide variety of students? You know, are we really resourcing our inclusion programs in ways that they can really make, that we can be proud of, the inclusion that we are setting up?
Yes, I think the first question about the inclusion is a great one. I think that, to your point, which is very, very well taken, we are always going to have a diverse population of students, that not all students will be able to be in inclusion, just like not all students should be at a district, right? So, the individualized part of the IEP is the most important. I think that the differentiation between inclusion and inclusive opportunities is one that I want to make sure we keep talking about, because the inclusive opportunities is really making sure that we're creating environments where people feel like they're safe and they're welcome, and they can learn, and they can learn and they can be successful. And that doesn't always happen to be in a general education classroom for some students, and that's okay. And I think that that's one of the biggest messages, if we could put out there, that we all have individual different needs, and they're going to look differently for different students. So, to that, and I think that's a great question about what does inclusion in a general education classroom look like versus how are we building school communities that are welcoming for all of our students and families? To your second question about inclusion classrooms, I think that that's a great one, where, when there are a lot of students with diverse needs, that is, one of the main focus, that's one of the main reasons why we created the inclusive support teams, was to be able to deploy people out to schools to help support in those situations, to help have another set of eyes to help figure out some ways to troubleshoot. It's not evaluative at all, it's just to figure out ways to troubleshoot. The most effective way, I think, I've seen and that we're continuing to do when we're looking at maybe classrooms that don't, that a student that might need more support is making sure we're getting those supports to that student through their IEP. So, their classroom is the structure of where they are, but more specifically, especially when we're called out for specific students, we're looking at what the individual student needs and making sure that's added to their IEP.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, Dr. Coleman.
Great, thank you for the report, and appreciate the very difficult work that you and your staff do. It's critical to our growth and success, and so as we try to dig deeper and increase our understanding, I want to start with how much we respect and appreciate the work that all of you are doing as we try to get clarity about the big problems we're facing. So, I have a couple of questions, just more, you know, and I also know the challenge of providing data that you can present in a short period of time, and the difficulty of presenting complex data, but I'm going to be asking for more complex data going forward. And in particular, you know, this whole issue of staff representation and matching is a complex issue that we face across the board, and as we improve our ability to report data of movement and success, we'll be able to answer how well that's working for us. But I would also want to start, I would like to hear, you know, what's the human capital campaign for your staff, you know, as we look forward to diversifying the BPS staff across the board by program? I think we have to start developing some program-specific plans, and would like to hear what that looks like. And then, things like on slide number four, where you talk about the progress over time in least restrictive environments, the demographics of that, I would like to see that reported so we have a sense of those trends and whether, you know, what may be happening globally, and then how we break that down specifically by group. Slide number six is a very complicated slide, and that is information that I would like to see the trend over time, you know? So, if we see a reduction in numbers by demographic groups in different areas, we have a better sense of that we're moving in the right direction. But when you just do a static year by year, that's hard to see where our progress is, because we know this takes time to staff well and be successful. And then, the other, in that, in the 19% reduction of assignment to special ed, I would like to see that demographic background, and using the chart you have on page six would be very helpful. And finally, my question is, and particularly, this is somewhat, you know, properly driven by the large number of African-Americans who are in the emotional and intellectual, which are kind of the, sometimes, some people think are the softer diagnoses. What's the ratio with housing security? And what's the ratio between housing security in Boston and our special need population, which one can imagine, you can start looking at maybe some of the Latinx population, their diagnosis seem to be driven a lot by communication and language issues. What's the role of housing security, i.e., you know, the homelessness factor that may be facing all of our poor children, and that is in this city that identifies a large number of African-American kids as well? And we know that sometimes the behavior associated with being homeless looks very much like some of our emotional disturbance diagnoses as well. So, having that housing security is one of the things that is tracked, and I may be completely wrong, may not have any effect, but I think that there's some suggestion that it might...
Definitely, and I think, I can definitely break down the data more to have more of a discussion about, to see what that looks like and the linking of it. I do know that a lot of our out-of-district students right now are also facing housing insecurity. So, if it's not just homelessness, it might be DCF custody or other pieces that are impacting where they're living, and then exacerbates the situation happening at school. So, yes, there is a connection. I'd definitely like to get the data more for you on the homelessness piece.
Once again, thank you for your great and hard work, and look forward to getting the information.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and thank you for those insightful questions. I'd be, you know, quite interested in hearing that information as well. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Nielsen, and to the entire team who's here tonight. You know, it's often a measure of how a district is doing by how it treats and works with its most vulnerable population, and that's who this entire group works with every single day, so thank you for what you do. I do have a couple of questions for you. On slide four, where we have inclusion increasing by 8% over four years, if I read that correctly. So, this body passed a policy about four years ago where we specifically called for an increase in inclusion. But we didn't, I honestly don't remember if we actually set a goal, because we also, at the same time, were saying the need to do it right, not do it fast. And that was a lot of feedback we were hearing from schools about, it's more important to do it right than to do it fast. So, Ms. Nielsen, do you have a specific goal that you're working towards on inclusion?
So, I do look to state rates quite a bit, to state rates, the DESI rates of the state average, to look to that as a metric to, not necessarily say we have to mirror, as we are the largest district and the most diverse district of the state, but it is something to look to. And the state is at about 78%, if not into the 80s, of full and partial inclusion. So, we do have some way to go when comparing ourselves to the state. So, again, I'm not saying that's a hard and fast number that we need to get to, but it is a metric to see that we have made progress, but there is still room for much more in comparison of where we're teaching our students, so that we're ensuring we start in the least restrictive environment.
So, I'm going to ask a very judgmental question, but I'm going to respect your judgment. How do you think we're doing on inclusion?
I think that, in the time that I've been in this role, but I was here before this role, I think I've definitely seen a greater awareness in the district of diversity, and by that also meaning including disability and not maybe just race or socioeconomic status. So, I think there's been a large improvement in the ability to have the conversation about what this looks like, which I think is a huge step forward. I think people are more willing to have honest conversations about what disability means. I think that pointing out that the high incidence disabilities are more often maybe softer or more subjective, and having that as a conversation about how we determine students' need for an IEP versus taking into account their environment or what the trauma they might have experienced, all those pieces, I think, have evolved since the time I've started about eight years ago. So, I think in that sense, again, inclusion classrooms are one thing, inclusive opportunities and inclusive environments is a different thing. So, I do think that the expansion of the conversation is very helpful. To that end, I think that the conversation is ready to just be more action-oriented than it is talking about it. So, that's where I find we need more improvement.
What are the big challenges to you to increasing that number up to 70%?
I think that some of the challenges are the systematic mindset shift of a large district. It's not the biggest in the country, but it is large for our area of the country.
You referring to teachers or school leaders or parents or general ed students or...
The whole community, yeah, overall, the whole community, I think. I don't think it's in one specific group or another. I think that this is, special education and disability is a very complicated topic in general, so I think that that in itself is a barrier, where there are pieces that we see in the law that we want to happen but might not necessarily be required to happen, and that difference gets blurred. But those, the major pieces are just, the actual shift and move in mindset as a whole community, not one specific group.
Good. Well, anything we can do to help encourage that, please let us know. I mean, I have conversations with school leaders and teachers all the time and parents, and, you know, this body, remember, we've had parents testify to us of, you know, "I don't want any students with disabilities in my general ed classroom," right? That was a mindset we heard a few years ago, and yet we've had other students come and testify to us about the benefits of being in an inclusive classroom. So, you know, this is a stated policy of this body, and we appreciate the movement towards it, and I'd love to see it continue to accelerate. I appreciate the work on the inclusive support teams as well. I think that is helping the teachers figure out how to get it right, because the teachers want to do it, but they want to make sure it's done right.
Yes.
Couple of questions for you for the numbers on slide six. And I note that when you talked about the classrooms on slide five, it probably is, you specifically say does not include the classrooms at the Cott or the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing and the McKinley. But then, when you do the numbers on slide six, you say does not include students enrolled in the Horace Mann Charter School. So, that would be the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and some of the other Horace Mann?
No, those would be our in-district Horace Mann Charter Schools, for example, Boston Green Academy.
Yep, so like Dearborn, et cetera?
Dearborn is included.
Dearborn's in Horace Mann in-district charter, right?
I don't think so, yeah. Dudley Street, Dudley Street's another one, and also EMK is...
Okay, so those are the ones. I'm curious why those numbers aren't included?
Those are their own, they're their own local education agencies, so we don't include them in these major counts, because when they report to the state, they report for the October, this is for the October 1 count that we do, that every district accounts for.
So, then, let's go on these numbers that you have, the 10,500. How does that compare to previous years? Are these numbers going up or are they going down?
Previous years, I know, so, in front of me, what I did bring, how we did this last year, last year, we did poll it on April 17th, 2018, so it's not the same snapshot of October 1. I can tell you that as of April 17th, 2018, we had 11,991 students on IEPs. So, the number, as I've experienced, it goes in and out, and about, there's about 1,000, give or take, of students.
So, it may be interesting for us to see it on a year-to-year comparison, and, because then we can really see what the trends are in the district. And I'm interested in how some of the things, some of these change. So, for example, are the autism numbers going up?
Yes.
Is that the single fastest-growing number? I suspect it is, but that's why I'm asking.
Yes, specifically at the three-year-olds, three- and four-year-old, the early childhood.
And how about the emotion...
So, Mr. O'Neill, just to draw a point to this, because it's quite significant, so our, the autism rates in our early grades have increased 100% over the past five years, and overall, our K-12 rates for students with autism have increased by 64% across all grades.
So, when you said that number, you said increased 100%, that was roughly from what to what?
I think it's in the past five years, yeah. I can definitely get you the hard numbers. I know within the past five years, it's done that.
So, do we anticipate this is a trend that's going to continue?
Yes.
And if so, this means some serious planning in behalf of the district to plan for this for future years, I would anticipate.
We are well aware of it.
One of the reasons that equity of program placement and having the conversation around selective admissions at our high school level has been so urgent in the context of Build BPS, because we know that we need more spaces and that the classroom requirements to serve all children well, particularly in these specialized strands, on average are two to three times the number of classrooms for the same number of children. So, yes, this is actually a fundamental and sort of driving concern within Build BPS is making sure that we have, certainly, the facilities and space, which is just the beginning, but then the trained staff, the support services, and the interventions that then wrap around, but it also needs to be part of the facilities plan.
Thank you. If you could get some historical data on that and also some breakout by grades on that and what your projections are, that's really important for us to know. That's a big policy type.
Projections or the...
Projections, yes, particularly on the autism numbers, right? And are you seeing declines in the emotional and intellectual designations?
Not necessarily declines in the disability type, but we are specifically in intellectual impairment seeing a change in setting. So, where students are being educated is shifting a little bit. Emotional impairment, I think, is seeing pretty stagnant.
Obviously, there's been a lot of attention nationally, particularly in some of the student groups within that. When you break it down by data, break the data down, as Ms. Robinson called out and Dean Coleman, and there's been of, I'm being real careful in my wording here, there's been a lot of assumption that it's been a catch-all area, particularly for young men of color.
Yes.
And, you know, it would be interesting to see how the district is looking at that and if you're focused on it in detail.
Yes, we, as an asset team as well, has looked at this to focus on, to look at our substantial set of classrooms, specifically in emotional impairment for our males of color as the group, the five departments are looking at that, too. So, that will be forthcoming, how we're looking at specifically addressing this.
Thank you. Couple more questions for you. I note the number here that said hearing, 121. How many students do we have at the Horace Mann School for the Heart of Hearing?
Eighty-eight. Top of mind.
Thank you. Are you speaking on behalf of the district, Mr. Chair, or...
Top of mind.
Okay.
I'm going to go with his number.
Well, we also have a headmaster in the back, so are we agreeing with that figure?
I was actually also just going to say that Headmaster Maritza is here.
Ninety, okay.
I stand corrected.
Very close, Mr. Chair. Within a margin of error. I note, is that included in the 121 figure?
I'm sorry, can you remind me where you got the 121 figure?
So, right here on this slide, it says hearing, all students with disabilities, hearing, it says 121.
Thank you, no, that also, this is the entire district, so we also have students that might have hearing as their primary disability that are at, or they're in generally classrooms or mainstreamed as well. So, they won't, they might not be attending the Horace Mann. So they won't, they might not be attending the Horace Mann.
Okay, so if we have eighty, but is the eighty-eight or the ninety-figure included in the one twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
In this one. Sorry, in this data because the data before doesn't have the, sorry, the slide before doesn't have the day placement, the day schools, this one does, yes.
Right, okay. Could you help me out with how students are placed at the Horace Mann versus in other programs? If their primary disability is hearing?
Sure, so the, a student is evaluated for eligibility for special education. A disability is present and an IEP is developed if the requirement is that a student needs modified instruction in order to gain access to the curriculum. Students, as it exists right now, and we're working with the Horace Mann School for the Deaf to evolve this, the Horace Mann School for the Deaf is a day school, meaning that only, all the students there are students with special education IEPs. There are no general education students that are there. There are other, there are other students that might have hearing as their primary that might have a very low need of service other than addressing the hearing. So they may be in general education classrooms or inclusion classrooms or in other places across the city. And again, I just want to remind us that this is a, this is the high, I'm sorry, this is the primary disability. A lot of students have more than one disability that we're addressing in IEPs.
But this one hundred twenty-one figure is in a category that says all students with disabilities. So I would read it as the one hundred twenty-one are students with disabilities. Am I, because you said, well, some may be in general ed, so I'm just a little confused.
I'm sorry, but being in general ed, meaning that they might have a resource level of service, a low level of service that might have them in general. The way that we have it is that depending on the level of need, a student can be placed or assigned through general enrollment. And so they might have a low level of need that only requires the addressing of the hearing loss. And then they make, they can, the student will go in and makes a choice like any other student would. That's considered our resource students. Also, this could be a student that's in an inclusion classroom that has hearing as their primary disability and an IEP written for inclusion.
Okay, I don't want to belabor the point too much. I'd love for you to look at that a little bit deeper. Having been out to Horace Mann, as many of us have, there's some serious academic chops going on out there. And when we have a resource such as that of teachers who are really specialized in teaching a population, I would think we would want to maximize that as much as possible. And you know, I, boy, I remember last year being out there and talking with the valedictorian of the senior class and I believe she was going down to DC. She's probably down there now at what, American University or one of the schools down there. And I'd put her up against any one of our valedictorians. There's some great academic work going on out there. So I hope, I would encourage that that's a great opportunity for students. And two more quick questions. Because we heard so powerfully from the students of the West Roxbury Education Complex tonight in the autism strand, and that's just, you know, a small group of students with autism in the, out of the fourteen hundred fifty that you're, that you're working with. But boy, what a powerful message from them. And I want to encourage you to make sure that as the rest of the district is working to help place as many students appropriately from West Roxbury Education Complex, I hope you and your department are standing up and fighting and feel the support from us when you work with your district's senior-level peers who are working on contract negotiations and everything and having a seat at the table and firmly advocating on behalf of those students. We felt it was very important when we voted for that that promises were made to those populations and particularly the most vulnerable. And I want to make sure that you and your department feels the support of, at least me individually, and I'm sure the chair would speak on behalf of the full committee, that pound the table on behalf of those students. If there's one department within the district that should be doing that, I would hope and expect it would be your department and you have our support if you do so. And I say that also overall, I, you know, you are a department that has to be so focused on compliance, right? And we understand that. The amount of regulatory work that the department deals with is phenomenal. And the amount of difficulty this district has gotten into in the past when that wasn't adhered to is phenomenal. And so I understand how important that has to be to do and do it right and how that takes up a hundred and ten percent of your team's time every single day. I understand that and respect that. I also hope you continuously always realize how much our school leaders and our teachers need the special ed department to have their back at all times. I think back of the example of a few years ago when I used to visit, when I visit school leaders, I always ask what department is the best to deal with? I used to say in Court Street, now I say Bowling, and what is the most challenges? And for many years, I always heard HR was the worst. And now I always hear Office of Human Capital is the best. And even though it's very heavily regulatory, very heavily compliance, tons of paperwork for school leaders, they now come across as we have your back and we're here in support of you. And I would love to see special ed get to that because you're such a critical department for all of our school leaders. And I know how hard the compliance and regulatory requirements are, but when you have school leaders loving the work that you're doing and looking forward to picking up the phone and calling special ed department, that's a goal to have.
Absolutely.
And by the way, you're not listed on the worst, so I'm not saying that. But it's a real goal to shoot for.
It absolutely is.
Because the work you do is so vitally critical to our most vulnerable students. And I said at my outset, that's how we judge our district and that's how many districts should be judged. So thank you for the work that you and the team do every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Vice Chair Oliver Dabla.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report and also thank you all the staff as well. I won't be too long, just a couple of things. I do, would, I do agree and would like to see on that Slide six over time. I think that's really important. And I would also like to see gender. And I ditto what Ms. Robinson said. I mean, I think when I look at the black students and the Latino students and I look at certain categories, it's just very disturbing. And can I ask, since this slide is internal, correct? This is a BPS slide, this is not for the state? Or is this like some, a state slide, Slide six?
Slide six is.
Is it internal, it's just your department?
Yeah, that we develop, yes, yes.
Okay, so then if that is the case, could I please ask you not to use Hispanic? Because I don't like anything that has the word panic in it. I just think that's not a way to, Michael knew I was going to say that, but it really is like a pet peeve that I have. You can use Latino, Latinx, whatever it is, but that would be great. And also, it should say race and ethnicity because being Latino is not a race, it's an ethnicity. You can be any race. And then my other quick comments are, the replication, I just want to also repeat that I'm very interested to understand that a little bit better and what the demographics looks like. And then how does that, what, how are you documenting that so that that can happen in the higher grades? Because that's something really great to look at in terms of best practices for other grades. And I'm curious about which part of your team, do you do any kind of observation? And I'm curious only because this is not an area that I know a lot about, but just having sat here in school committee and having had parents, caretakers come and testify. And sometimes some of the stories you hear, you know, they're, they're not great stories. So I just wonder, do you do any observation at all in classrooms? Like what does that look like and who is kind of in charge of that and provide feedback?
Yep, so the inclusive support teams, again, not, in a nonevalutive way, are doing observations. The, I would say that the ABA team does a lot of observations throughout the work that they're doing. The people that are centrally deployed are traveling from school to school, helping to support the programming. So a lot of their work obviously has to do with observation in the classrooms and then to the program and then giving feedback to making it better. The assistant directors that are assigned to each network, some of them have, it's easier for them to do more observations than others based on the size of the networks. But that was an investment that was made where I do have one assistant director in each network so that there is one point person for those clusters of schools. In the smaller networks, it's worked out really well. I think there's a lot more observation going on with direct feedback to the classrooms or to the school leaders, which has worked out really nicely this year, which we definitely want to make sure we're encouraging.
Great, great. And then I'm just curious about the twenty schools that you're working with. I don't know what twenty schools those are and if there's, if they've been picked out for a particular reason, but I'm just curious if, you know, taking advantage of working with those twenty schools, and again, I'm making assumptions because I don't know, if those schools can be like the, the ground for really talking about being inclusive and that welcoming, welcoming inclusiveness that you were talking about? If that's a place to really pilot something that you could, you know, then take on to other schools? But again, I'm making assumptions because some of those schools could already be doing that. I'm just curious if we could take advantage of something that we're already doing. And that is my only question and I, oh, my last question is, is the Horace Mann School for the Deaf, is that a dual-language school by any chance?
Maritza, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, we do function as a dual.
I know you function, but are you an official dual-language school? Like Muniz Academy, I know is like an, are you guys official?
We'll have Headmaster Silberito to come up and answer at the table. Please, please.
Just so we can hear you from the microphone, Maritza, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's, thank you.
Welcome.
It's great being here in front of you and joining the conversation. Yes, we do function as a dual-language school because we, our students learn and we teach in two languages, American Sign Language and English. In terms of being recognized as a dual-language school, we have made great progress towards that and we submitted an application and it has been reviewed and we are currently waiting notification from the district to, in terms of our approval.
Great, great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Oliver Dabla. I do want to take a moment and just say thank you once again to the staff that are here tonight. Again, we appreciate you staying with us for this late hour and you know, we certainly know that you work a lot of long hours in service of our children. And again, it's deeply appreciated and I hope you've heard that in the comments from the committee tonight. I thought it was great to hear from the superintendent earlier about some of the great work that you've done just with the Autism Lunch very recently and some of the other efforts that were highlighted in your presentation as well as outreach that we've heard from our Family Engagement Office in the past to try to get out into the community and make sure that we're pulling in students that will need services at the earliest possible opportunity. And certainly the work that you've done to go out to the CBOs at very early ages, particularly as we've heard with the younger and younger diagnoses that we're seeing in some of these growing disabilities within the district. It's incredibly important for us to be able to plan for that and create the appropriate programs to address those needs. I did want to note, you know, it's helpful context in your presentation that you've built in expectations for the upcoming school year with our expanded ABAs within the budget that we just recently approved. And so that's, we'll look forward to those improved services. I thank you for talking about the IEP system rollout as well and the, some of the experiences that students have and families have had with that. And I would expect that, you know, when we have the SPEDPAC presentation in a few weeks, we will hear a little bit more about that and what that parent experience has been. I thank you also for highlighting very briefly, but you know, still very relevant, some of the transition work that's been happening with students that are aging out of our system and moving into careers or other transitional services. And you know, just, I think this is probably just a snapshot, the slide that you included with maybe eight or so partners that we have in that space. But you know, some of the great work, I know some of, I believe it was Chief of Staff Consalvo and Chief Academic Officer Charles Grantson were just out of Wentworth to observe one of those programs earlier this week or late last week, I believe. And having those partnerships, Jewish Vocational Services, just to name a few. Marriott, I know, has been involved in this space. I think Harvard's looking to get into this space as well. It's great to have those partners and be able to provide some opportunities for our students to continue to have productive lives beyond the four walls of our schools. The one thing I do want to recognize and I thank Mr. O'Neill for calling out the speed with which we're increasing inclusion. You know, that's, you're absolutely right. I served on that Inclusion Task Force a number of years ago and we issued a set of recommendations. The, we did want to get it right, not do it fast. And I note, I think it's about a nine percent increase in the classrooms that have occurred since that time. But as you've noted as well, Ms. Nielsen, we still have a ways to go. About fourteen percent is the gap between our inclusion model within the district and, or inclusion models within the district and what the state averages are. So we'll look forward to that work that you continue to push out. And I know the district has been in those discussions with our collective bargaining partners as well to try to find some solutions. I think the really striking thing that I took away, however, from those statistics and it's actually expanded upon quite a bit in the appendix, is the fact that we have closed the gap between students with disabilities in full and partially inclusive settings and students with disabilities that are also English language learners that, over that time period now. At this point in time, and I think it's something that should be recognized and applauded, is students with, that are EOLs and students with disabilities are at the same level of inclusive settings as their general education peers. That's something to be applauded and I know you've worked hard at that to close that gap. So thank you all for doing that and heeding the urgent needs of our district.
And the grad rates too.
Indeed, Mr. O'Neill is pointing out the graduation rates for students similarly situated as well. So I don't have any questions. I just want to highlight a couple of things from your presentation and say that I once again appreciate that, the work that all of you do. And we'll look forward, when Ms. Kane and SPEDPAC are back on May eighth, if you could provide a number of the responses to the questions that we've had this evening. I know one of the big ones was on staffing diversity and the plans for staffing diversity within the district in your unit as well as a number of the other data requests that we've heard this evening. It would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you again and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on now to our final report this evening, which is a Build BPS update. At this time, I'd like to invite our Chief of Operations, Mr. John Hanlon, to step forward once again along with Chief of Engagement, Ms. Monica Roberts. They'll be stepping forward to the podium shortly, but in the meantime, I'd like to turn things over to our interim superintendent for her opening remarks.
Since I actually made my opening remarks in my superintendent's report, I will not repeat them, but as Monica and John are getting settled, I will just emphasize that the information we are sharing tonight is our effort to proactively identify and respond to buildings that have suffered from longstanding neglect, are deteriorating in ways that we must be attentive to and may or may not have long-term viability issues. And so in the case of the Jackson Man, again, we are talking about a facility issue that will require with a two-year planning timeline, some relocation, some swing space, the decisions, ideas and planning and analysis around options for those schools, both short-term and long-term, whether they move together or separately, temporarily or long-term. And again, we're talking about two schools as well as one of the city's community centers. And so we have requested a full engineering analysis based on our concerns on the building. That is the report that we released tonight. We have a plan for near-term. We have a plan for near-term investments that will ensure that the building is a safe and secure environment for at least two years, which is what we think is an appropriate amount of time to plan for any short or long-term moves and relocations. And that is something that we will undertake in collaboration with the school leaders and school communities, as well as, you know, experts in the field and our peers and partners in city agencies around property management and facilities. So with that, let's turn things over to John and Monica.
Thank you very much. Thank you, School PD. I'll add that you've already heard from her this evening, but we're joined by Maritza Siliberto, the School Leader of the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. Ms. Siliberto will offer some remarks at the conclusion of our presentation. I'm also joined, as Superintendent Perle mentioned, by Monica Roberts, Chief Engagement Officer. As Superintendent Perle mentioned, the Jackson Man facility in Alston serves the needs of multiple entities, two different Boston Public Schools, the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, as well as the Jackson Man K-8. In addition to that, it houses the only Boston Centers for Youth and Families Community Center site in the Alston-Brighton neighborhood. It's a roughly 220,000-square-foot facility spread across two different buildings, a front building that fronts Cambridge Street and a back building that fronts Armington Street with a catwalk that connects the two above Armington. It has been the focus of extensive temporary facility repairs in recent years, mainly to the roof, the windows, the flooring, and ceiling tiles, among other aspects of the building. It was approved for an FY19 capital project to replace the windows, knowing that that was a building system in need of repair. More on that in a minute. As was mentioned near the beginning of the school committee meeting tonight, this is a building from the 1970s era. Yes, this is the second building that we've now talked about from that era in front of the school committee that has had challenges. That is not to say that all buildings from that time period are failing. And in fact, we're watching them very, very closely, particularly those buildings because of these challenges. But I don't want families who are sending children to other schools of that vintage over the next couple of days to worry that their buildings are going to see the same fate. That's not necessarily the case. Yes, we've had challenges with a couple now from that time period and we'll continue to monitor others where we know we have some difficulty. But this is not to say that all buildings from that era are, you know, soon to follow the same path. As has been mentioned, the facility concerns at that site led us to request a proactive and comprehensive building assessment. This is something that Superintendent Perle mentioned in her opening remarks this evening, something that we're happy to have been able to do with this school facility that we were unable to do with the West Roxbury facility in the fall. And quite frankly, we learned from that experience. And what we learned is that we need to do better. We need to give school communities more time to plan for these kinds of outcomes. And as a result of that, and as a result of hearing from multiple members of the two different school community staff and families, as a result of talking to ISD and asking them to look at a number of our buildings and see where our concerns needed to be directed, we then asked the Public Facilities Department at Superintendent Perle's urging to conduct a comprehensive engineering review of all building systems at the Jackson Man facility. Because of the capital project for replacing the windows, we were already queued up for a similar report, but knowing that that was going to be insufficient to meet the overall building needs, we asked them to broaden the scope of that, not just look at what would be required for a windows project, but what's actually required across the building writ large. And PFD then worked with us over the course of the winter and just yesterday finalized that report, which again, was done through an external contractor with a number of different subcontractors. One brief note on that, again, the report is already published online on the Build BPS webpage. You'll notice that it's titled a CIPR. We call that SIPR in Facilities or Operations Language. Just as an FYI, that stands for Capital Improvement Program Request. We call it an engineering report, which is essentially what it amounts to. This engineering report's findings raise serious questions about the site's long-term viability. The report's initial conclusions, which were shared with us at the very tail end of January, suggested that the facility should be shut down and rebuilt, though short-term repairs could be made to extend its useful life. We learned from the report that several building systems are noted as needing full replacement. These building systems are past their useful life and include the roof, the exterior envelope of the building, the windows, the air handler units, and other facility components. It appeared at that time that it would be likely that even with certain repairs being made, we may need to shut down the site after the 2019-20 or 2020-21 school year. And I'm going to come back to that point in a moment. Within days of learning of these initial, again, initial conclusions from the engineering report, we brought in the two different school leaders involved, both Maritza Siliberto at the Horace Mann and Anita Moore at the Jackson Man, and had frank conversations with the two of them about what we were learning. We then, as Monica will mention later, conducted further engagement with the broader school leader network and all of Alston-Brighton to share what we were learning. Knowing that a one- or two-year time horizon was somewhat unacceptable to us, we decided to go beyond the recommendations of the SIPR at that time to make further investments to, again, further extend the useful life of the building, which I'll touch on in just a second. Last thing right now is, it's very, very important to note that despite the long-term outlook of the facility, we're not pursuing closure of either school at this time. It is accurate to say that we will need to pursue closure of the facility because of the concerns that are laid out in this engineering report, which are very dire. But we're not right now pursuing closure of either of the two schools nor the community center. As mentioned, the upcoming repairs will exceed the report's recommendations and ensure two-plus years onsite in that same location. Based on the findings of the draft report and on the facility team's prior experience with the building, BPS facilities will pursue repairs this summer to the roof, windows, flooring, HVAC system, lighting, and ceiling tiles. The estimated cost of these repairs is about a quarter of a million dollars. Of these, the roof is the main concern and will be inspected monthly. And just a brief note on that, the roof is not in a state of structural damage where there's a risk of the roof collapsing. I want to make sure that that's very, very clear. The problem with the roof is actually that the top surface of the roof has become what they call delaminated from the substrate beneath that. And what that means is there's some billowing in the top level of the roof. So there's actually no danger of the roof collapsing, but that condition of the roof has left the building exposed to many, many leak issues and other conditions which are, quite frankly, unacceptable and could only be remediated by a full replacement of the roof. Moving on, as mentioned, we wanted to make sure that we bought as much time in this facility as we properly could without putting our students and staff in harm's way. We do believe that the school is a safe and secure environment right now, but we also know that it's had some challenges that we've continued to address throughout the years and will continue to do so over the next few months. That said, the initial recommendations from the SIPR, the engineering report, spelling out those short-term repairs, as mentioned a minute ago, we knew that that would give us some time, but quite frankly, not enough assurances that we could get through a two-year period to plan with the community, which is not something that we had in the case of the West Roxbury Education Complex. Because of that, the investments I mentioned before that we have now moved forward on to go beyond the recommendations of the report include retrofitting of three of the four air handler units that basically control the ventilation and air conditioning for the back building. One of those air handler units was recently upgraded. The other three are past their useful life. And quite frankly, they were the one building system we were most concerned about over the next two years because if they shut down, then there's no ventilation and you have no choice but to shut the building down and go through emergency procurement to bring in air handlers. So we immediately started working on that. That work will take place this summer and will require the full shutdown of the back building, again, along Armington Street.
So as was stated earlier, the Build BPS team's efforts are focusing, on the Jackson Man facility, are focused on finding a space for the Jackson Man, the Horace Mann, and the Boston Center for Youth and Families. As we're doing this, we're considering the needs of the two school communities separately. And we believe that through our efforts, we might be able to relocate the schools into new locations as early as September 2021. The Jackson Man has over 500 students with a significant number served in specialized programs. With 39 classrooms, the Jackson Man is twice as, twice the size of over half our building. So we have to think about the number of students that we need to move. While the district is focusing on finding a suitable home, we are also considering the challenges of securing a sizable real estate suitable for the Jackson Man at its current size. And we may need to think about the programming and how to relocate or trim some of the programming in order to make it feasible to relocate the school. The Horace Mann is a citywide school and for some time, we have been discussing facility options and specifically the potential of it becoming a standalone middle school, sorry, standalone school. And so those are conversations that we will continue to have. Lastly, one thing I do want to note, we do also, don't want to minimize the value of the BCYF and that building and to that community. So we're also working very closely with them to think about space options and a solution for them as well. So as John stated, one of the things that we did as soon as we started, requested a review of the facility was to engage those two school leaders to support us in this process. Obviously, we need to have teams in the building to do a walkthrough. And we've really worked to keep them apprised each step of the way, to answer any questions, and to partner with them in this effort. Given the impact of a change in any individual school in our ecosystem, we went ahead and engaged all of the Alston-Brighton school leaders in this conversation to, one, keep them informed, but also so that they can serve as thought partners as we think through, what do we do about this building emergency? And then lastly, we have, have, and will continue to engage with the BCYF in this process. John?
Yes.
Do you have another, our slide is black, so our screen is blank, so we can't see where you are. Do you have another slide?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm on Slide 8.
Okay, great. All right, I'll wait to the end. Go ahead, Monica.
So one of the things that we are trying to do is communicate early and often with students, families, and staff. As John noted, the SIPR report was finalized yesterday. It is on the website as of today. We sent a letter to families yesterday, which included a notice about meetings that we'd like to take place. We are meeting with staff of both schools this week, tomorrow, April 11th. And then we are meeting with the Horace Mann community at the school on April 22nd. And for Jackson Man, because a number of their families, about half their families come from the Alston-Brighton area and the other half from the Dorchester-Roxbury-Mattapan area, we're going to have two meetings so that we can make the meetings more convenient for our families. One will be on April 25th at the school and another on May 2nd in the Dorchester-Roxbury area. We are working with the schools to think about what our ongoing communication strategy will be. We know that we need to utilize a variety of means in terms of in-person as well as other communication strategies to work with them. We do have some work to do between now and the beginning of the next school year. So the first thing we want to do is obviously ensure that the space is, the improvements are made to the building prior to September of this year. There are currently six summer programs that have been located at the facility. Three of them are school-related and three are community center-related programs. All of the programs will be relocated, of the school-related programs will be relocated because of where they are. They're closer to the back of the building, which we need to close in order to start the repair process. And then two of the three BCYF programs remain open. And the other one will have to be relocated due to the limited space and the repairs that need to be made.
I'd like to come back to one of the themes of our presentation, one of the themes of Superintendent Perle's opening remarks this evening, that although this is not good news and we're not happy to deliver this to the two different school communities nor to the community center, we are happy to see that this is a change of tact, so to speak, within Boston Public Schools, where we've done everything that we could to buy as much time as we could so that we could plan collaboratively with all of the communities involved. And in fact, on that note, as Monica mentioned, as we go out to have our community meetings, we're going to be trying to meet the communities where they are as well. We're going to be conducting meetings onsite at the building, but also conducting a meeting for the Jackson Man families that don't live as close to Alston-Brighton, so that we can meet them where they're at. As mentioned, though, from a building and facilities, bricks and mortar perspective, it's now incumbent upon us to try to do as much as we possibly can to stay ahead of future building emergencies. And that's exactly what this is a sign of and a sign of things to come. For that, I'll say that we're going to continue to pursue more full-scale engineering, external engineering reports and ISD assessments as needed to stay ahead of emerging building concerns. As has been discussed here multiple times over the last month, we have recently proposed a $5 million project at the Blackstone to close off classrooms and provide increased security. If that is approved for inclusion in the city's FY20 capital budget, an approval which we will not know of until late June, then we'll begin that project with a comprehensive building assessment as well, knowing that that is also a building from the same time period where we have had some challenges. We want to get ahead of that as much as we can. Based on ISD's review and other sort of facilities reviews of that building, we don't believe that that building is anywhere close to the condition that the Jackson Man and certainly West Roxbury were in, but we still want to get ahead of whatever is there. We've had conversations with ISD recently to begin another slate of thorough building assessments that they'll do out of cycle from their annual building inspections, so that, again, they can continue to help us to get ahead of the issues that we've seen multiple times now in the last several months. And lastly, we're going to continue to work with the MSBA. As has been noted here and on the slides, we have submitted or completed 30 accelerated repair projects over the last four years to replace roofs, windows, and boilers, and will continue to invest in this area. And forgive me for adding on one more time to the alphabet soup of all the different agencies that we're working with, but this is a big change for BPS in that we're working much more closely with multiple agencies, not just across the city, but across the state. We'll continue our work with the MSBA. We'll continue to work with ISD on these building assessments. We'll continue to work with the Public Facilities Department, PFD, to make sure that they're conducting these engineering reviews as thoroughly and as often as we can. And lastly, a brief highlight and a timely highlight, we're also working much more closely now with the Boston Planning Development Authority, BPDA, so that we can work with them in terms of a planning perspective, so that we can get ahead of some of these issues and tap into their expertise, so we can plan forward and understand where we might have some parcels that we can adapt into schools, where they might have some properties that we can look into for swing space or other purposes. We're going to continue to meet with them on a regular basis so that we can plan ahead as effectively as possible. And with that, we'll wrap up the formal presentation, but doing that in a way of reminding people that all of what we just talked about, roofs, boilers, ISD assessments, engineering reviews, the $5 million Blackstone project, this is all, you know, stuff that pales in comparison on the excitement scale to things like new builds and expansions and major configurations, reconfigurations. But this is all a part of Build BPS. And as is indicated on this slide, when we talk about the five categories of work within Build BPS, we do have that category of capital repairs to maintain existing buildings, where we'll work with the MSBA, we'll conduct these capital repairs. And we have now with Build BPS the resources that we have not had over the last several decades to get ahead of some of the deferred maintenance that is plaguing some of our buildings. Forgive me.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Monica. Before you start questions, if I could just add two other points. I think one is that as we talk about roofs and boilers and windows and air handlers, which I did not even know what they were until just recently, I think it's important to point out that one of the reasons that we are trying to proactively get in front of this, layout plans, even though we don't have firm plans, but layout plans to do immediate repairs and have a plan to plan and sufficient time to plan, is that we recognize that at the end of the day, these are not buildings and facilities. These are communities. We heard that very clearly and painfully during the challenges of West Roxbury. And where we do still have building situations to address, and Boston clearly does, we need to find a way to normalize this, to give sufficient time, to make it a conversation with school communities. It's one of the reasons that we reached out, not just to the school leaders immediately, but to all the school leaders in the surrounding area. Our schools are ecosystems. It's possible that some of the temporary solutions will come from that ecosystem of schools, particularly with the very complicated Jackson Man. One thing I do want to say very clearly at the front end of this, because this is a different way of doing business, is that to say that we're going to have a transparent and engaged planning process, there will be times when central office will be going off and assessing various options and finding different strategies and then coming back to the school community to say, here's what we know now. Here are some of the options. It will not always be, you know, a complete group conversation. It will be iterative and back and forth. But I think it's important to say that a planning and back and forth, but I think it's important to say that a planning process is a planning process. And that means you mention ideas, you test ideas, you explore possibilities, you come back and report on them, and not everything that is floated as an idea becomes reality. And we also need to build that into our conversation, or we cannot effectively have a transparent planning process. So to be able to say things right now, like, we will have to figure out if all three programs move together, or if it's easier to find solutions for them separately. We will have to evaluate whether we rebuild for one, two, or three of those programs on the same site, or we find temporary or permanent facilities elsewhere and build there. That's part of the planning and exploration process. So I urge people to give us all plan, time, to have that conversation and plan, and to not jump to conclusions, forward conspiracy theories, all the things that happen on both real media and social media. It is a conversation. And so we look forward to doing that work. And I think, again, we hope that this will become a roadmap for collaboratively solving large problems that can face our school communities in a thoughtful and planful way.
Thank you, Ms. Peril. I'll open it up now to questions.
Actually, Chair LaConte, if it's okay, I apologize. As mentioned at the outset of the presentation, if it's okay with the committee, I would like it if Maritza Silberto, the school leader of the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, would come up just to say a few words from the school leader perspective. She's actually here with a couple members of her community, someone from her administrative team, and someone from her parent council. I'll add that the Jackson Mann had a school site council meeting this evening, so they're not here right now, but we would welcome Maritza's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, and welcome back, Ms. Silberto.
Thank you. Can I put this in top of here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. This is big letters, but I won't be too long. Looks like a lot, but it isn't. Thanks again for having me, having us. There's some representation from my school committee over there. Say hello, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to join you. Every time you receive a report like this, of course, it's not good news. But I also want to bring in a little bit of a different perspective, perhaps a little bit more positive perspective on it. I keep quoting you, Superintendent Peril. You said tonight, "This is a different way of doing business." And thank God for that. I am very happy that we are approaching these issues in a different way, in a collaborative way. As you know, I'm Maritza Silberto, and I am the principal and headmaster of the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. We serve, we educate students in, from kindergarten to 12th grade and beyond. We're located in the same building as the Jackson Mann, as you know, in Alston. We have a proud history as the first public day school for the deaf in our nation. And we serve students in, deaf and hard of hearing students in Boston and in neighboring towns outside of our district since 1869. Today, we look forward to celebrating our 150th anniversary coming up this fall. And we're planning a big celebration, and we hope that you all will make it. It will be a lot of fun. We have an outstanding team of highly qualified educators and staff, the best students and families that anyone could hope for, some of them here, and I have the privilege of being their school leader and teammate. It is not surprising to me, or my school community, that the condition of the place we call our schoolhouse since the mid 70s, I'm sorry, has sadly deteriorated to the extent that it is now. Over the years, the multitude of work orders we've submitted to facilities became increasingly overwhelming, not only to those who were tasked with fixing the unfixable, and doing so with inadequate funds, but also to us, the occupants of our sacred space of learning. So when last fall, I approached our superintendent, Laura Peril, and subsequently John Hanlon, our chief operating officer, it was because the time had come to have an open and honest conversation about facing a reality that could no longer be ignored. This was not about placing blame anywhere, but rather an opportunity to open up our eyes collectively, to recognize what great things can happen when school-level leaders like me, and district leadership like all of you, come together to a welcoming table to listen, to understand, to wrestle with problems, and plan for a brighter future for all of our children. I stand here, not alone. I carry with me the voices of my community members. I stand here, not alone. There's part of my community right there, and I know that many more would have loved to have been here with you tonight. I am here to thank you for the investments and work planned for this summer, to make our schoolhouse a good and safer place to live, to live in while we plan the next steps. We at the Horace Mann School have been dreaming for a long time to finally return to a single school building, as we've had had several before since our inception in the 1800s. We look forward to being restored and ushered into the 21st century's Center for the Education of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing in our district, a place that our students very much need and deserve. We, together, have much work to do. I'd like to share with you, in response to an email I sent to Superintendent Peril last October titled, "Build BPS Inside Jackson Mann Complex," that's a great place to start, I thought. She responded to my email, and I quote, "Your thoughts regarding Build BPS are important to me. I can assure you that we will take your comments, suggestions, and any concerns into careful consideration as this process moves forward. Superintendent Peril, I believed you. In December, you came to one of our New England Schools for the Deaf basketball tournament games. You looked me straight in the eyes and reassured me, saying, and this I paraphrase, "Your parent leaders have come to our Build BPS meetings." I was proud about that. Please know that our team is working on it. Superintendent Peril, I believed you. Yes, we are fortunate and grateful to have a small but mighty parent council team, which is led by a co-chair, co-chair Charlie Kim, who happens to be in the audience tonight. And when planning and engineering brought a team of assessors into our building, prompting some of my staff to send me frantic texts, "We have strangers in our building walking around." I was delighted to respond, "Do not worry, they are working here." Certainly, the tide was turning, and I could not wait for the report. The zipper report. Yes. Superintendent Peril, on behalf of the Horace Mann School community, thank you and your teams for working with me and my teams, for working with us. We have exciting work ahead of all of us, and while some aspects of this work is uncertain, and we do not have the answers to many questions now or the ones to come, one thing is for sure, the future does look brighter for the Horace Mann School. Together, we can do what is right for all our deaf and hard-of-hearing students in our district and beyond. And speaking of uncertainty, I know we are all human, and nobody likes uncertainty. But I'd like to leave you with a quote from Rachel Naomi Remen, doctor of integrative medicine, a teacher, and author. Perhaps the secret of living well is not in having all the answers, but in pursuing the unanswerable questions in good company. Thank you so much for your good company. We look forward to working together and a great future ahead. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Silberto, and thank you for leaving us with those nice thoughts. We'll open it up now to questions from the committee. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. Particularly, thank you for your remarks. I grew up in Boston and was around in the late 50s, and I remembered when the Horace Mann School was at Dudley and students. And so, yes, I remember when you all were a separate bearing, and then you moved off to the Clowns, and you were doing wonderful work then, and you continue to do wonderful work. So thank you for your service. We've talked about Alston Brighton neighborhood in the past, and that there are three elementary schools, the other Winship and the Gardner, as well as the...
There's also the Edison...
The Edison, K-8, the Jackson Mann, and the Horace Mann.
Right, so that there are a number of schools. And the question, thinking about the percentage of kids that live in Alston Brighton, you know, do the majority of them go to school in Alston Brighton? Are there other students that are going out of Alston Brighton to other parts of the city? Or do the majority of those students get educated in Alston Brighton?
I believe your question is like, what's the import-export rate, essentially, right?
Exactly. In terms of thinking about, you know, the impact, I know that a number of children from Roxbury, Dorchester, Mattapan go to the, because of some of the special strands, but also because there aren't enough seats. And so I guess part of my question is, as we think about this over the next two years, how do we think about enrollment? In terms of not, the issues of displacement, or moving kids, you know, would we maybe not engage as many kids coming into Alston Brighton in the younger grades for the next couple of years, and place more Alston Brighton kids in Alston Brighton if you're going to think about finding a new location for the Jackson Mann in Alston Brighton, you know, temporarily? Again, just thinking about, you know, every time we do this, it is stressful. And so the question is, where do you mitigate your stress by not creating it? And waiting for the permanent solution to move more kids back in? I don't know. I'm just wondering about numbers and spaces, and how do we do this with the least amount of stress for families?
So I'll leave Monica to dive in on any specifics, but we are definitely, you know, again, we're at the very early stages of coming up with potential ideas and strategies. Clearly, we will, to your point, and thank you for raising it, we will be looking very closely at enrollment, both in sort of the near-term solutions, as well as potential longer-term solutions. So I think we are all well aware that there are a significant number of students attending the Jackson Mann. The Horace Mann, of course, is a citywide school, so students come from all over. It actually has out-of-district students who come into it, because it is a highly specialized school. For the Jackson Mann, which is a very complicated school with, serving a large number of complicated programs with vulnerable students, a significant number of them are not, do not live in Alston Brighton, are coming in from Roxbury and Dorchester, roughly 50%. I do not know the exchange rate, so, Monica?
So I don't have the numbers across all, the entire Alston Brighton network. It is 53% for Jackson Mann. I do think, one of the things that we've talked about is, how do we work with families and school leaders, also around choice? Because some of the reasons why some of these families are there are because they chose, and so how do we think about choices that families who have access to the school, currently on their school choice list, but may not attend there, might want to make, and why they're making those choices? So I think there are a number of conversations we need to have, both within the Alston Brighton community and families there, as well as families who are opting to go to schools in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something? While we're on the subject of enrollment for the Jackson Mann, enrollment at our school has also gone down significantly, and over the past years, we noticed, we've been noticing for the past three years, but when we went back five years ago, that it was steady, steadily going down. And it is one of our major concerns. And there are lots of issues that are playing into this. We have identified some of them, and we are currently in communications with the Office of Special Education here, to see how we can tackle this issue together. I know that one of the slides tonight showed a number of 121 deaf or hard-of-hearing students in the district, including us. We are now at 90, but I believe that there are over 250 students who are hard-of-hearing or deaf, who are currently in the mainstream. At the Horace Mann, we work with students, and we, some of them do, and, you know, that's the path that they go, and we prepare them to go out into the mainstream. We used to do that even more so, but we've noticed that one of the issues that we have raised is the fact that it seems that there is, there is a group of evaluators that are under special education, that are really now making a lot of the decisions. We used to be the Center for Evaluation, Assessment, and Placement of all students in the district. Eventually, gradually, somehow, you know, I can't tell you how exactly that happened, but gradually it happened, and we no longer are. So there are lots of issues at our school, but we're glad, you know, thankfully, we are working with the special education, because there, we could be servicing, like you said, Mr. O'Neil, that there's a lot that we used to do, that we are still capable of supporting all of our students, not just the ones in our school.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Silberto, and thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Coleman.
Great. Well, thank you, and it's a difficult time, and it's not going to get easier. This will be four or five years before we get close to calming down. So in the spirit of design thinking, or our planning and opening up the ideas, I just had two comments. One is about the, is about the Horace Mann, in that because it is such a special and high-performing school for a particular population, seems to be a perfect place for thinking actively about what type of higher ed partnerships you want to bake into the new bread that you create in terms of professional development, training, being a model for other districts and schools, and highlighting the value of that place. So I would, I put that earlier on, but it's kind of self-serving, too. And then in terms of Charleston, I mean, I want to bring up the Charleston conversation earlier, since we're on Build BPS, that was, that, the parents who came in highlighted what we can anticipate being a huge problem, and thinking through what's going to happen with development in places like Charleston. And it'll be out through, it'll be in Mattapan in a heartbeat. What happens when development comes in and creating capacity for our schools? And I just want to put it on the table, I love the Chinese solution, is that developers are responsible for building the schools in the area in which they develop. Just putting it out there as an idea. Because we're thinking big.
I believe we pitched that today in a conversation with our friends at BPDA, but we're not quite there yet, but...
Superintendent Peril and I were just exchanging sort of like wry smiles, because we just had that conversation about 10 hours ago.
Well, the press can help us with this.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. The gentleman from Charlestown, Mr. O'Neil, will have his questions next.
He's going to provide the endowment for the schools?
Yes. Don't forget, I'm a JP kid at heart. So thank you for these presentations and the comments. Mr. Hanlon, I'm going to go straight to a comment you made. You said, "We're now working with ISD to do an accelerated look at the number of buildings, to do a number of building assessments." Did we do building assessments of every single one of our buildings as part of the first stages of Build BPS?
Yes, we did. And in fact, that was, that was a big part of the initial launch of Build BPS back in the spring of 2017. What those amounted to were...
John, could you remind the group of the firm that did that?
Sure. SMMA is the name of the external architectural firm that led the facility assessments as part of Build BPS. Again, it was all externally done. And they did, over the period of a year, go through all of our buildings and do assessments of every individual building component. And we have heard some concerns regarding those reports and assessments in the last several months. The fact of the matter is that, in some cases, could they have missed the mark in some assessments? Possibly. Are we seeing some deterioration of building systems that has accelerated since that time? Absolutely. And so those assessments were always meant to provide directional... assessments were always meant to provide directional guidance of where we might need to focus. We also have, aside from that, though, a facilities team that knows our buildings better than anybody. They know where the hotspots are, where the problems are. And only recently, though, have we gone beyond our own facilities team and started to sort of build new muscles in working with other departments across the city, so that we can bring more capacity to bear on these challenges. And that's where the more thorough assessments that I was referring to earlier from ISD come in. So, this is going far, far beyond the facility assessments that were done as part of the initial kickoff of Build BPS. Those, you know, we were never going to be able to achieve the level of depth that months-long research into a building will be able to develop, which is what the byproduct of this engineering report gives us. We are, though, going to look to do more of those, albeit a smaller number, in areas where we have concerns. So, we'll continue to work with PFD in examples like the Blackstone to come, and potentially other schools, to do those full-scale engineering reviews. We'll continue to work with ISD. And in fact, just in the last few days, I had a conversation with Commissioner Christopher, who spoke before the committee back in the fall, to start the conversation again about what other buildings should he and his team go back out to, to do very thorough assessments of, so that we, again, we can stay ahead of these issues as much as we can.
So, we hired a firm to do that. We spent a lot of money on it. We started to make a lot of decisions off of it, or we're waiting to hear the decisions off of it. But now, what has changed in two years? Let me back up. What was the assessment of the Jackson Mann building by that outside firm?
I believe the assessment was good. The building was overall in good condition.
And yet, the headmaster will tell you, she's been filling out work order forms for years and volumes on that building.
More than 150 work orders in the last two fiscal years, yes.
So, how do we... I mean, come on.
I can't speak to that right now. What I can tell you is, there is a very big distinction between what those assessments were, and what we're looking to do now with ISD and PFD, because these things that we're able to conduct now through external agencies are much, much deeper and more time-consuming than what those initial assessments were meant to do. Those initial assessments, they have provided some guidance in terms of where we need to make investments in accelerated repair projects, where we need to invest in the roofs, boilers, windows. And yes, I think it's fair to say that some aspects of those assessments were missed, and we're learning of that as we go.
So, Superintendent, you used the exact phrase, conspiracy theories. And we wonder how conspiracy theories get started in the city. Build BPS, and I know there's a lot of great work going on about it, but it's drip, drip, drip at this point. It's like the water leaking from the roof at the Jackson Mann. And when we use phrases like, "in writing and verbally, we are not pursuing closure of either school at this time," and then, Mr. Hanlon, you use the words, "not right now," people hear that, and they see that, and with all due respects, it sounds like it was written by a lawyer. And they hear that, and they hear, "Well, we had the assessment of the buildings, but now we're asking ISD to do assessments of buildings." When are we coming out with the full Build BPS plan? That's what everyone's waiting to hear. They just want to hear a plan put out, that then we can start to tear apart.
So, Mr. O'Neill, if I may, because I came in late to this process as an outside observer...
And thank you, and I'm going to interrupt for a second. Thank you, by the way, for pushing, like this work, actually being proactive about it, talking with the school leaders, getting assessments done, holding conversations. That's great. It wasn't done before. So, I...
Well, and I do want to...
This is not a direct criticism of you.
No, no, and it's not so much about criticism, but what is the work going forward?
Right.
And so, I would say that... and John, correct me if I'm wrong, just one other clarifying point. So, the SSMA report that happened in 2016...
2017 was when it was released.
But it was done in...
That work began in late 2015.
Okay. So, this was 2015, 2016. These were not full engineering reviews that were being done?
Not even close.
So, I think that's the first part of the answer. What was presented as building assessments was not at the level of specificity that perhaps should have given any policymakers full confidence that their good was good, and their medium was medium. Not being an architect or an engineer, we clearly have seen accelerated deterioration of the building. Some of that has been explained to us by engineers, that once a building is not in good shape, it accelerates even more rapidly. But I think there's reason to have some concern with the initial assessments conducted by SSMA. I don't know how else you come to a conclusion. The other thing, though, I want to distinguish, Mr. O'Neill, this notion of some of the frustrations in the early phase, and the transparent but complicated and sort of iterative process that Build BPS is right now. There was important foundational work done in the early year of Build BPS, although we see some shaky foundations for some of the assessments. There was other good data pulled in around enrollment, and around feeder patterns. But then, Build BPS essentially stalled for a good year or so, before being relaunched this fall. And so, unfortunately, as complicated as this facility-shifting, feeder-patterns, grade configurations is, you have heard the question that in a number of our conversations, "We need to find space before we can move school buildings." That is why you don't have a 10-year roadmap that says, "In this year, we build this school, and this year, we build that school." I do not believe Boston will get to that. We will need to be comfortable with saying, "We build this building, pay attention to the feeder patterns around these 10 schools, and then, once those are settled, you can see which building you can get to next, because there are open grades, or you have swing space created, or an open building has been created." So, I understand it feels like drip, 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 but there is not a way to move such an integrated school system, which is three-dimensional chess, without waiting for one step to happen before the next.
So, I respectfully disagree. Baltimore's done it. Cincinnati's done it. I can name a half dozen other districts that have done it, that laid out a 10-year master plan that said, "We're going to build these buildings. We're going to close these buildings. We're going to change these grade configurations. We're going to use swing space." It has been done. And right now, we got so much good work going on in our buildings. We've built a brand-new Dearborn. We have the New Arts Academy under construction. The Carter feasibility plan was approved today by the MSBA, which is fantastic news for our most vulnerable students. We've put 21st Century Furniture in all of our buildings. The Carter School will tell you, under that fund, the eye-tracking software and technology they were able to put in place for the students is changing learning for the students. But teachers across the district will talk about the new stuff we have going on. We got a lot of good things going on. We're building all the new kitchens. We've been improving schoolyards, but no one's getting it, because they're hearing, "Well, we're closing West Roxbury." And now, we had someone say to us early today, "Well, why don't you call it what it is? You'll be closing Jackson Mann." This city only sees the drip, drip, drip. And until they see a master plan, they're not going to realize how important this commitment is from the mayor and the city of putting a billion dollars into it, how much more we're working with the MSBA. I guarantee it, and I apologize to call out, you know, we have representatives of the press here today. The story will probably be about what's going on with the Jackson Mann, and is it potentially closing? Not about all the good things going on in Build BPS right now. And this city wants to hear what a plan is, even if it means, here's Phase 1, and here's rough outlines of Phase 2 and Phase 3. And other districts have done it, and we can do it here. So, I'm sorry, Superintendent, but I do respectfully have a different viewpoint on this. And I think people want to know it, because they want to get behind it. And as Dean Coleman pointed out, and as we heard from parents tonight, yeah, there are tough issues going on in Charlestown right now. Charlestown is under siege. I walked to work a mile faster, and it's one mile, I walk faster than people who drive it, because it's so hard to get across the North Washington Street Bridge now, and construction at the other end at Somerville Square. We are backed in. And what's going on in East Boston with all of our schools, with the gentrification going on, and the families, recently arriving families being pushed out to Everett and Chelsea and beyond, and the people that are moving in don't have the children. And yes, we talk about new neighborhoods being built. Suffolk Downs is going to have about 10,000 units of housing. And yet, if you talk to the developer out there, he plans to put a charter school in there, because we haven't had the sit-down, and with the city, to say, "Should a Boston Public School be in there?" So, these are some big issues that are going on with our city right now. Mr. Chair, you appear confused by that.
The charter piece, I guess I haven't heard that, but...
Yes, I've heard it directly. I've had a direct conversation with the developer leading it, former head of the BRA.
Okay.
And he's planning upon putting a charter school in there.
Okay.
And on the other piece of it, in the Revere side of it, Revere will probably put an Early Education Center in for you, on the Revere piece of it. So, you know, we got a lot of key issues going on now around the city, and we need a plan that is out there, that people can start to tear apart. And I'm sorry I've gone on a little bit of a tangent on this.
A good O'Neill rant, which we love, which is really important.
Thank you.
I don't say that fraudulently.
Right. We have some real issues facing the big pictures of the district right now, and we need to start to get a plan out there that people can tear apart, instead of for two, three, four years now, we've been talking about a plan that is coming. And doing it drip by drip is painful for our parents, and for our students, and for our teachers. End of story.
Mr. O'Neill, if I may, I'd like to pursue the conversation offline about what's happening in Baltimore and Cincinnati, and I look forward to learning from the processes that they have. It's easy for me to say, but also wager, I guess, that the plans that they're putting forward aren't going to be the reality of five, six, seven, 10 years from now. We're trying to adopt a different way of thinking here in Boston, and yes, we've received criticism for not coming forward with a crystal ball-type of plan that lays out, "Here's exactly what's going to happen over the next 10 years." Had we done that two years ago, and Build BPS launched, we already would be off the rails from that plan, because we did not see West Roxbury coming. At that time, we did not see the Jackson Mann coming. There are going to continue to be some unforeseen things, both positive and negative, that we're going to have to react to. In addition to that, this new way of thinking that we're adopting, which I, as a lifelong resident and graduate of the system, welcome, allows us to not do it the old way, or at least the way that was perceived for years, which is that, you know, the district is playing favorites, and that, you know, the chosen ones are getting the things that they want, and the other ones aren't. We're adopting a new way of saying that, you know, yes, we do think that middle schools are going to transform over time, but we're not going to say, "That middle school is going to become that person's, that school's property, and this middle school is going to become that school's property." And how those processes unfold will then point us in different directions in the future. And yes, it's more fluid, and it's not as, I guess, as crystal clear as a plan might be that people are looking for. But we also know full well that, when the district has come out with plans, and quote-unquote "solutions" in the past, and I say this in all, in the utmost respect, the district has been criticized for that, because we've done these things behind closed doors. We've done these things without collaboration, without thought and input from the community. And so, we're taking a new tact in being able to say, "You know what? We're a little vulnerable right now in announcing the future of the Jackson Mann, but we know that there are some good ideas out there that we can tap into, to build the best solution for those two school communities and the community center." And so, yes, it's not a plan that people are looking for, and yes, there are some things that are happening, in your terms, drip by drip. But I would submit that these sort of drips are things that the district wasn't even considering or talking about 10 years ago. These 30 ARPs, Accelerated Repair Projects, weren't happening 10 years ago. These four new builds that were in the process of putting together with MSBA weren't happening 10 years ago. And so, there is a lot of excitement. I think, to your point, if I'm going to take one other thing from that, aside from learning what some other cities are doing with master planning, it's, we might need to do a better job of celebrating some of the positives that are happening as part of Build BPS, because there is a lot of positivity, whether it's the 21st Century Schools Fund, and My Way Cafe, or the Carter School just today getting board approval to move into feasibility. We need to do a better job of celebrating that.
And I may have had a mental error. It's either Cincinnati or Columbus, which, by the way, their plan is done, and they're now having more people move back into the city, and their enrollment has gone up, because they put in a whole series of new buildings. And I'd be glad to foster a conversation with folks in Baltimore, who are towards the very end of their plan right now, and are now celebrating the opening of a lot of new buildings, after going through a lot of painful discussions to make it happen.
That's great.
So, those are two that are farther along in the process. And one final question, headmaster, since I have you here, because I did mention earlier during the superintendent's comments, that the team should be open to the idea of actually having the Horace Mann in a central location in the city to potential better serve students all around the city. And I hope I wasn't presumptive in whether that would be something of interest to you and your parents, and your staff.
So, just to clarify, so, the question is about having the Horace Mann being centrally located?
Yeah. Well, I use the example of the Carter School, which is, then makes it easy for parents from around the city to access it.
I would think that would be beneficial. The main thing is to make the school accessible, whatever that may be, to all of our deaf and hard-of-hearing students, not only the ones that are enrolled as full-time students at our school, but also to those who are in the mainstream, because those students need a lot of support as well. And so, I often wonder how much support are they getting with just a handful of people servicing them, when we also have the personnel and the expertise to support those students?
Thank you. Thank you. And so, Mr. Chair, I apologize for taking so much time. Superintendent and Mr. Hanlon, I want to thank you both for your work on this. Superintendent, as I said, you took into a fresh approach to this when you joined, and just the work and the communications with these school communities is very different from the past. And Mr. Hanlon, digging in, working, getting ISD here, that meant a lot, at least to me, when the commissioner spoke, and that's a fresh approach as well. I know how hard you're working on this. I'm sharing some of the frustrations that we are hearing. And so, I hope you take it in the spirit of what it's meant. It does not diminish in any way the support that I have for the work that you've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Vice Chair Alvedavila.
Thank you, Chair. So, just, I'll be quick. I know it's late. But I do want to say, I think there... you said a lot of great points, Mr. O'Neill, that I agree with. And I also think, at the same time, I hear what you're saying, Superintendent, I think all those points are right, too. I think there's also this opportunity before us with this model, that this, like, two years out in conversation, that I know, and I know all of my fellow members have heard, too, when they've gone to visit schools, where many teachers and headmasters are like, "Just let us in a room, and let us figure it out. We can do it together." And so, I think there's an opportunity to have that conversation with the community, with parents, students, you know, staff, et cetera. And I do agree, I think there is... we just have to also figure out how we're communicating the larger Build BPS, so that it is not looked at as like... because I think, you know, I had similar reaction when I got this slide and the letter. I was like, "Oh, my God." I had, like, anxiety, like, "We're going to close the school." That was like my first, you know, and I can just, you know, imagine that's how other people... and, you know, then I read more information, and not everyone's going to watch this school committee meeting. So, I do think it is about, like, our communication also. We just have to figure out how we're communicating, like, the broader approach, and why we're having, you know, this conversation, because there will be a lot of unintended consequences if we just, you know, piece everything without giving thought to some of, like, the feeder patterns, enrollment. But I do think the drip, drip is true. And I just wanted to say, again, I think, like, the community discussion with the school, the parents, is so important. And I'm so happy to hear, you know, some of the things you said, Monica, about going out, or John, I don't know which one, going to the community versus, like, the community, you know, going to meet where the community is at, and having conversations over a long period of time is really important. I'm wondering, we had talked before at a previous school committee meeting about, just in general, and I know you're just getting these assessments, but as school committee, I think we want to kind of understand the lay of the land for the buildings, and getting a report on how the buildings are doing. And I'm glad to hear that buildings would be looked at, not just on, like, the annual cycle, but, like, continue to be looked at off-cycle, and then definitely, I think that's really smart to work with the BPDA, you know, I don't know, DND, I don't know if they play a role, whoever it is. Like, I do think that that is great, and working with ISD. And I'm wondering, I couldn't understand in this report, you talked about the roof, so the roof will be completely replaced, or you're just, like, patching? That's what I didn't take away.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the condition of the roof is so far gone that it, you know, it would need to be fully replaced. However, we're not able to fully replace it amidst the level of damage and deterioration throughout the building. What we're going to be doing this summer, number one is doing monthly inspections of the roof, which we have been doing throughout the school year. Number two, making some more temporary repairs to the surface of the roof, so that we can try to stay ahead of the try to stay ahead of the leaks before, you know, they, they cause more damage inside the building.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say to Headmaster Sylberto that she's amazing, and I just want to thank her and her team and family, and I'm very happy for your school community to have a really excellent space that you deserve, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Chair, just a couple of quick questions for me. Mr. Hanlon, you talked about the air handlers that will need to be replaced. If, I can't recall if you mentioned in your presentation tonight, but in past conversations, though, if, if this building is not to be rebuilt or repurposed for the long term, those air handlers are items that if we're spending money on them now, we can certainly repurpose them in other school buildings if needed.
Yeah, there'd obviously be some, some loss in terms of depreciation and also the labor that we wouldn't obviously be able to recoup. It's about a half a million dollar expense that we're pursuing this summer. We expect that we'll be able to recoup maybe a couple hundred thousand of that if we then repurpose the parts that we're using to retrofit the air handlers there and put them in other buildings.
Okay. You also mentioned the windows. That is something that, that is a project that had been previously approved for the building. That's on hold now, correct?
Correct, that is on hold.
Yeah, and that wasn't an MSBA ARP project?
No, that was through our capital plan, and, and again, that's what, that's what essentially kicked off our sort of new approach here. As soon as PFD was about to embark on scoping out the work required for that project, we put that on hold immediately, and through Superintendent Pearl's direction, asked for a full-scale building assessment so that we can understand the, the scope of work related to the entire building, not just the windows.
Okay. And, and I appreciate you, you know, talking a little bit about ARP earlier and the closer work with, with.
MSBA.
The MSBA, thank you. Trying to write and.
Lot of letters you gotta remember.
Speak at the same time, yes. And, you know, I think it's important to point out, because in this broader context and this broader conversation we're having about some of the, you know, failing buildings that we've discovered in this, in these last six months, that, you know, the ARP is designed to counteract those, those types of critical events. You know, it's, what is it, roofs, windows and boilers. Those are the three typical ways where you have a building incursion that then turns into a situation that creates further building failures. And we saw that with West Roxbury, there was a leak through the roof that allowed water to get down into the building and resulted in a domino effect, if you will, of negative effects on the, on the building. So, I think it's, it's important for us to reiterate just how important it is that I think it's over just the last six years in the current administration that we've really, four years, thank you, that we've really taken advantage of the accelerated repair program that's provided by the MSBA. And I think it's close to $100 million now that we've collected through or have made requests on or collected over that time span from the ARP to benefit the rehabilitation of our existing buildings. So I want to point that out, and, and thank you again for raising that. And I guess the only thing that I'll close on is, you know, Mr. O'Neill, I, I heard your, your comments, and, you know, I think I'll grant the idea that, you know, I would grant and, and agree with the idea that I think the, the Build BPS plan has been delayed. You know, we've, we've had a lot of false starts, and, but I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the premise that, you know, we're at a point where we're languishing or, or not creating any sort of clear pathways for people to understand where we're moving with this process. And, you know, I think, you know, in respectfully disagreeing with, with I think the position that you've put forward here, you know, I point to a couple of things that we've talked about over just the last six to nine months. One would be, you know, the urgent and critical needs around middle schools and how those don't really necessarily work within our system with the way that kids move through our system any further. So that's an organizing principle, and I think that the district would probably agree with that idea. I think something else that we've talked about on a number of occasions, but we've never really moved to conclusion as an organizing principle is the concept of moving this system to essentially what's a binary system of K six, seven, 12, and K eight, nine to 12. And I think that's a presentation that's actually coming up in the next month, a discussion on, you know, putting a stake in the ground, so to speak. Because I think once we get to those types of organizing principles, and I'll use as an example, a letter that Superintendent Pearl issued to school leaders a few months ago, as an example here, it was a, a set of principles that school leaders could rely upon in making proposals for K to six school buildings in our system. That's something that didn't exist, and I, I think a lot of us just assumed that, you know, once we started having these conversations, the administration had moved forward, the school district administration had moved forward in, you know, presenting that kind of proactive planning tool to our school communities. So I think it were essentially at an inflection point now here where we've got a number of organizing principles that are allowing our, schools within our district to begin to have more cogent conversations that, that help us think a little bit more clearly about how we organize by neighborhood, by region within the city, and by grade structure within the system as well. Because as I think we've talked about on a number of occasions, and I think that the conversations that we've been, that have been happening right now between our district and our school leaders and our school communities around the K to six question and a number of the schools that are going to be affected by the McCormick plans that are, have been proposed in recent months, really reflects the way that you can start to bring those communities together to, to begin to see what our individual neighborhoods and our specific schools within those neighborhoods are going to look like over the next two, four, six, eight years of this process. Because only then are we going to be able to understand, you know, I hear the examples of Baltimore or Columbus or Cincinnati, and I grant that those systems are large and complex, much, much like Boston, but they're not Boston. I'm, I'm pretty sure they don't have the 24 or so grade configurations that we do. And they might have a number of grade configurations, but certainly the complexity and the history and the nature of the way that our system has got to where it is bears out the complexity and the approach that is necessary for us to be able to untangle that system. I mean, this is a Gordian knot, I view it as, and I, and I think I share, what I sent, what I hear most in your comments is frustration, and I think that's a frustration that all of us share and the community shares with, how do we undo this? And I think the answer to that is that we take it step by step, and I applaud the district, of course, and I think you, I heard that in your, your comments as well. So I don't mean any of this to be pejorative, but I'm trying to, you know, give a little bit more context and my perspective here on what you said. I think the district's taken a number of very concrete steps to help those in the community take the materials that we've had presented to us over a number of the recent years through the facilities master plan and into the Build BPS process, and overlay those on what our district has given us, our communities have given us through the community process, and start to think about how it is that we take these couple of organizing principles that we have put out there for the community to take in and think about and use that to build up this system going forward. So I want to leave on, and certainly, you know, if, if you disagree with anything, I'm certainly happy to continue this conversation, but, you know, I, I want to put that out there because I want to make sure that people come away and continue to come away from these conversations that we're having, understanding a couple of things. We care very deeply about this district, all of us. I know you definitely agree with that. We certainly are trying our best to get to a point where we can have these conversations on a regular basis that take into account, you know, what our building stock looks like, what our existing grade structures and, and assignment distribution looks like, and what the needs of our communities are, and how we're going to make the best use of that billion dollars over the next 10 years.
May I make one comment in return? So thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Chair, and, and I think if there was a great lesson learned about the attempt to change the start times in the schools, it was the deep concern of having a top-down mandate from Central District of here's changes we're going to make without having school communities involved in the beginning. So Superintendent, this body was probably poised two years ago to take a vote saying, we want to go to a binary district, as you said, K to six, seven to 12, K to eight, nine to 12, and then let school communities figure it out. And that would have been a top-down approach. And the approach that you have taken with school leaders in engaging in conversations of, do you want to go to six? How would it work? What, what are the issues? And allowing school leaders to work that out is actually very impressive, and I thank you for that. And so, yes, does it take more time? Because those decisions are then going to cascade up to some of the building decisions that will be made? Yes. And I, am I giving voice to the frustration that we all hear day in and day out from people? Because again, with the, without the absence of the big plan, in the absence of the big plan, people focus in on the small individual steps and, you know, think that this is just going to be a series of school closings, which it isn't. And so, that's why I'm so eager for people to be really excited about this billion-dollar investment that the mayor is making, has committed the city, along with the MSBA, to put in our school system. We should be so proud of that, and that should be the first thing we're talking about all the time, and instead, we're constantly on the defensive about, well, what's going with this building and what's going on with that building. But yes, Mr. Chair, I, I do recognize that Superintendent, under your leadership, we're taking thoughtful, caring steps to work with school communities to get us to a position that people in the long run are going to be much more bought in, particularly around grade configuration, and I applaud you for that, as well as the proactive approach and looking deeper at some buildings. I'm just trying to give voice to that frustration we're all feeling of, let's get to a point where people are genuinely excited that we got a lot of positive momentum going.
On that note, if I may. So just to wrap us up, the frustration fuels urgency and urgency fuels action. So, as a longtime observer and ally of the, and former parent of the Boston Public Schools, I can confess to more than a little frustration myself, but it does fuel the work. And so, on that note, and I hear your point, and I think there's something instructive that the messaging, the packaging and communicating out of the, the emerging shape of Build BPS could be very gratifying and might be very useful. I think in, you know, the few short months that we've really been digging in, we have been catching a lot of long-deferred problems, you know, cans that were kicked down the road, and we're picking them up, and some of them were shaken pretty hard. And so, those, you know, I understand that that frustration gets in the, gets in the way, but we have been digging in on some action steps that would be great to summarize. So I can say that over the next several school committee meetings, and we'll be formalizing the schedule, we will have additional updates on the results of some of these early action steps beyond the problem solving, but the proactive work, which I think is what we all want to engage in. So, the McCormick planning team led by Mary Driscoll and Andrea Zayas and others is working very hard in the selection of the high school partner. There's an active planning process going on. We will have a report out on the shape of that new school, which will then enter its design process, both for the instructional content of the school and for the eventual physical building itself. Simultaneous to that, we are working with the K to fives in the feeder pattern around the McCormick Middle School and what will then feed into the seven to 12. And we'll have a set of recommendations in one of the upcoming meetings on which of those five elementary schools will be going K to six in the near term and which will take a little bit longer to make that shift. Simultaneously to Chair LaCanto's point, we also broadened the opportunity to add sixth grade to the some 40 schools that were eager to do it but were not around one of the new builds or middle school conversions. In response to feedback, we figured out a set of criteria where we could allow that to happen faster, again, in response to school, community and school leader demand. We issued those guidelines. We said that that would enable a number of other schools, sort of the early wave, to add sixth grade as early as September 2020. 14 schools found that they sort of matched the criteria and submitted their application. We're now analyzing those, and so later this spring, we will have decisions on a group of schools who will be adding their sixth grade with minimal need for investment or physical change. So I think some of these gears are starting to move in a way that we help, hope is a harbinger of action to come, and I think evidence begets energy. So as things begin to move, it gives, I think, momentum to the decisions that we are making. And then, as we begin with the actual McCormick conversion, I think the idea that we will start to see a new school rise out of that former space will, I think, further encourage us along the way. So, but I take your point that summarizing it and communicating it is also equally important, and I think we can do more work on that. We've had our head a little bit in the weeds on making some of these things happen. So, I appreciate the urgency and passion. It is necessary to fuel this work and to set up momentum for things to come. So thank you for all the thoughtful feedback tonight. And I really, some very nice things were said today, but Build BPS is an extraordinarily collaborative team effort. So many key leaders, John has, John Hanlon, I want to thank personally for the way that he has really stepped in to drive this fairly rapid decision and finding around Horace Man and moving it to action. And so, and you see, as you see the revolving cast of characters constantly sitting in front of you when it comes to Build BPS, this is a cross-functional district-wide initiative. It takes expertise from every side of the house. And what's good about that is when you have cross-functionality, you will have a group of folks who all deeply understand this work and continue, can continue to move it forward. This is not a one-person job, this is a multi-person job. So, I'm very grateful to the team that has rallied around this work so aggressively just this year alone. Thank you all.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you once again, Mr. Hanlon, Principal Sylberto and Ms. Roberts.
If I may, Chair LaCanto, I just want to end with one closing remark, that we're very fortunate to have Maritza Sylberto here with us, members of her team, but I just want to indulge the committee in coming back to some of the beginnings of our presentation, that we know full well that this is not a, a problem for one school, but for two schools and for a community center. We have been in touch with all of the above many, many times on a daily basis over the last two months, and will continue to do that. And so while you see the Horace Man represented in front of you today, please know that the, the Jackson Man is very, very much in our thoughts right now as we continue to work closely with them as well. We know that they have unique programs within Alston Brighton that we need to be very mindful of as we map out the future collaboratively with that community for that school as well, and the community center on top of that. I just wanted to end with that comment. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you again, and we'll look forward to further updates as we progress in our work here. We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. We have one speaker, Megan Wolf.
On the report, on this report. Thank you. I'll take the honorary role in the absence of John Mudd and Peggy Wiesenberg. First of all, I just want to say how profoundly upsetting I found today's testimony by the West Roxbury Academy parents. Really, in the many years I've been coming, I found it among the most painful testimony I've heard, and I have a lot of admiration for those parents who spoke tonight, sharing their stories. If the measure of a society is how we treat our most vulnerable, we are failing here. I'd also like to comment about the Jackson Man and the bigger issue of Build BPS and its facilities reports, and I'd like to thank the former chair for his comments. Any commonality is purely by accident or maybe by the result of logic. My first question is how it's possible that buildings built 45 years ago are in such terrible shape, and the same for a roof that was redone in 2005? I think my, the roof on my home is 25 years old. This is 14 years old. Who's being held responsible for this work? Also, in looking back at the BPS facilities evaluation available online, the overall building condition of the Jackson Man was deemed good, as was mentioned earlier. Not fair, not poor, not deficient, which might lead to an understandable, those, those last ones might lead to an understandable shift over two years, but it was deemed good. So what has happened in the last two years or even four years that so dramatically changed four years that so dramatically changed that? Or are there other factors that would lead to this most recent report? I also want to add that as recently as three months ago at a community meeting in Jamaica Plain, community members and families were assured that the only closing plans were for the middle schools and West Roxbury. So what's happened since then? I actually don't know anything personally about the facilities of Jackson Man, but the recent discovery that the facility is no longer viable in the long term, a determination very different than the Build BPS report, makes me seriously question both the reports that are the underpinnings of Build BPS, and it makes me question the current motivations for deciding that the facility will need to be closed. I may be among the conspiracy theorists here, but sometimes when you're paranoid, it's because someone is actually following you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. There was one additional parent from the Jackson Man who wanted to testify, Charlie Kim.
Oh.
Mr. Kim.
Of course. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome at this late hour.
Good evening. This is my first, and I just found out that you guys, everyone honorably does this twice a month. It's amazing that you guys do this each time, so I want to thank you for that. I have a semi-prepared statement. The reason why I say semi-prepared, I was given about 10 minutes to get these things down. But I want to introduce myself. My name is Charlie Kim. I'm a parent at the Horseman School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and I also represent the parents and students through the site and parent councils. My family is actually new to the school and to the deaf community. The Horseman, I want to tell you, is an amazing place, and we can't imagine having our family anywhere else. As you know, the deaf and hard of hearing community is very unique on an educational and infrastructures need basis. And so the leadership at the Horseman has taken a proactive strategy and released to us a thoughtful and well-written long-term vision and strategic plan. I could tell you, in the short period of time that I've been a parent, I've not seen one from a public school. I've only seen these types of plans coming out from secondary higher education, and then also private institutions, not from a public school. So it is truly well-written, and hopefully you'll be able to see that as it gets passed along. But because of that, I strongly believe that this is a huge opportunity for BPS to work closely with the school leadership, parents, along with special education, to create an infrastructure plan that will continue to make the Horseman, the school, the best example of a school for the deaf and hard of hearing, not only for Boston, but for the community that it actually services and throughout the United States. Again, I do want to strongly state that this is a huge opportunity for BPS on many perspectives for the deaf and hard of hearing community, but also for special education, but also including clearly defining least restrictive environment for the deaf and hard of hearing community. And I just wanted to close on that and thank you again for everything that you're doing and communicating to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you. Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Coleman.
You're mine. You know, I think the conversation about Charleston, East Boston, you know, clearly was a challenge that as we think of the iterative process that is Build BPS, this seems to be one that I haven't, I don't have a lot of clarity on what's happening around the city and how the district is thinking about it, and as we think about our building and then working with the city council and mayor about addressing these issues. So I'm, not next week, not in two weeks, but at one point in the next three to six months, I think it'd be very useful to have some conversation or some articulation of what, define the problem, at least just define the problem more clearly so that parents, as they're making choices, they're more, they have more clarity, and particularly this issue around these long wait lists. And what can we do? What can we do to keep families in Boston who really want to stay? We heard this at the bell time conversation before. There's a lot of passion and desire for families with capital to stay here, make the, help us make the surviving community. And then we have policies built into our system that drive them out because they had those choices. And how can we rethink that?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And I believe we do have a presentation that'll address some of that coming up. But no, with respect to the K to six, seven to 12 discussion. But, you know, certainly, I think, as the superintendent was starting to say, a lot of this is bound up in enrollment demand and waitlist management. And we have asked for some presentation on that. So I think your comments can help further give context to the specific materials we're going to want further discussion on.
And the other just hopeful note I will end on is that the, and again, we'll have to dig more deeply into this, but with the recent UPK announcement, which opens up avenues of K-1 expansion even when we may be space constrained, so the same high-quality curriculum, NAUIC accreditation, same expectations for salaries of the childcare employees that can happen in CBOs with support from this funding, may be a way through. It is so new that we are in the early planning stages of figuring that out. But I am hopeful that that will also be a strategy that allows us to work with schools that are both perhaps wanting to expand in K-1, but also want to add their sixth grade. So we'll take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our business for this evening. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled to take place on Wednesday, April 24th at 6:00 p.m. But I do want to note for folks that, given our tentative schedule for superintendent interviews that week, we may move to postpone that meeting to the following week. So we will aim to provide as much advance notice as possible to parties to make appropriate plans. So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you. Sounds like unanimous consent. And a second as well. Good night.